Okay, it is February twenty seventh, Tuesday, February twenty seventh, seven oh one. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. And we will be monitoring comments on Zoom, but not on any other social media. And comments will be permitted in accordance with our public comment policy and a good discretion of the chair. So let's do roll call vote real quick. Mr. Plax?
Chris Plax here.
All ready, present.
Ellen Mar, present.
Jack Crayton, present.
Jean Haley Dipple, present.
All are invited to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first agenda item is public comment. Does, is anyone here? For public comment?
It's not even here, I'm sorry.
Is anyone here for public comment? Nope. Is there anyone online? All right, it is seven oh two. We'll move on to license permits and events, starting with the South Shore Arts Festival. You're here, Patrice? Please feel free to come up.
So this will be our sixty ninth annual arts festival. Do I need to?
Why don't you move closer so people can hear you online?
All right, so this will be our sixty ninth annual arts festival. And it's always been a Cohasset common. In fact, South Shore Arts Center is an outgrowth of our festival. We are asking for permit entertainment license and liquor license for the three day festival. It's always Father's Day weekend. This year that falls June fourteenth through June sixteenth. The fourth day of the liquor license is requested for our festival preview gala, which is the Thursday preceding the festival, so that would be the thirteenth of June. The reason that we are asking for a liquor license for the festival proper is that, as you may remember from last year, we hosted a beer garden, very successful. We have a great partnership with the Green Bush Package and General Store and Norwell Package and General Store. It's Marty Block. He does Heritage Days in Situate and Norwell Days, obviously in Norwell. He did ours. I think if you went through it, you'll see he did a very professional job of creating the fencing and they were amazing at checking IDs. They did a great job. I heard good things from Chief Quigley and from his team. So I'm hoping that you'll approve that again. But in closing, I would just say this is a great place making event for the community, economic development. That's what we do. I think it brings a lot of attention to Cohasset, but also to South Shore as a culturally vibrant region. Any questions?
I'm ready to move.
Why don't we see first if Chief Quigley is online? I don't know if he is. Oh, there he is.
Hi there.
Hi, Chief, anything you'd like to add?
Hey, Patrice. Um, no, I fully support this and it was a great event last year. And I expect the same this year. We just had to iron out a couple, some parking issues. And I would ask that the board approve this contingent upon final approval in the days before from the public safety chiefs and inspectional services. Because some of these things are, you know, game day approvals. You know, some of the propane tanks and things like that. And I talked to the fire chief about this and he's fully on board as well as Pam.
Okay. Great, thank you, Chief. Okay, so we have, well, let me just stop and say, I think last year you did a great job. I've, I think it was maybe two years ago you started doing the same day alcohol license?
Yes.
And the beer garden. Because I went on numerous days, not the beer garden, but the festival. It did seem pretty well, well contained, so. So that was great. So we need to do a motion now to approve. The motion is for Thursday through Sunday.
I think it's actually for use of the common Monday to Monday.
Monday to Monday. Okay, I was looking at the liquor license.
Oh, okay.
Right, so there's two motions. Yeah, so the first one, why don't we start with the liquor license?
That's Monday is June?
Tenth.
So it's, yeah, it's June tenth, I believe. I should have that in my head.
Seventeenth?
Through the seventeenth, yeah.
I move that we grant the art festival a permit for June tenth through the seventeenth for the use of Cohasset common.
I'll second it.
So further discussion? Subject to working with the chief.
Yeah, I'm going to add that on the list.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous approval for the permit to use the common. So now we're moving to the specific liquor license permit and.
I move that we grant a liquor license to the arts festival for.
June thirteenth through the sixteenth, four consecutive days.
The thirteenth through the sixteenth, four consecutive days. Seventy-two final approval by the police chief and the fire chief and other public safety officials.
With the hours set forth in your application?
Yes, with the hours set forth in the app.
Yes. Because it changes based on the day.
Exactly, yes.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good luck.
Excuse me, you guys, you just needed the entertainment licenses as well.
Oh, okay.
One more.
Won't go anywhere yet.
I'll be chasing the band off the common.
Yeah, don't do that.
Is that just the thirteenth through the sixteenth?
The entertainment is also thirteenth through the sixteenth, yes.
And what's the, until what hour?
So for Thursday night for the preview party, it will end by ten o'clock. It's like seven to ten.
Okay.
And then Friday, it's one to seven.
Okay.
Saturday, it's ten AM until eight PM and Sunday, twelve PM until six PM.
Okay, I knew Sunday was earlier. Okay.
I move that we grant the liquor license.
Entertainment license.
Entertainment license for the well, when you're drinking, the entertainment should never.
Well, it's both.
Right along, you know, forgive me. We grant the entertainment license for January tenth through seven?
June, June.
January?
June.
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 Thirteenth through sixteenth.
Okay, and, oh, okay. June thirteenth through sixteenth, Thursday. Somebody else did.
All right, would anyone else?
I can't read my notes.
I'd like to make a motion to grant the South Shore Arts Center the entertainment license for the South Shore Arts Festival, June thirteenth through sixteenth on Cohasset Common.
Second.
With the hour specified? With the hour specified with the application. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
All right. We are at seven oh nine. And we have seven ten, perfect timing. Okay. So seven ten, the first is a public hearing for Cohasset Gulf seven forty corporation doing business as Cohasset Gulf for a new off premises section five wine and malt beverages package store. I'm going to read the notice so we can open the hearing and then we will go from there. You're with me for one second. I'm going to find the correctional notice. Seventy, okay, I got it. Okay, so this is the Town of Cohasset Select Board Public Hearing Notice. The Cohasset Select Board acting as liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, seven ten PM at ninety-one Sawyer Street, Wilcox Commons, Cohasset, Mass. To consider the application of Cohasset Gulf seven forty corporation doing business as Cohasset Gulf for a new off premises section five wine and malt beverages package store. The proposed manager is Tariq Mahmood. The licensed premises are located at seven forty Chief Justice Cushioning Highway, Cohasset, Mass. The shop consists of a gas station, convenience store, and Dunkin counter totaling approximately thirteen hundred square feet. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohassetma.org or in person at the hearing. The public can also attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda when posted. The agenda will be available online at cohassetma.org in the meeting slash hearing notices of calendar section located at the bottom of the front page of the website. Full application is available in the Select Board office. All right, so the public hearing is now open. Would you like to identify yourselves for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Walter Sullivan. I'm the attorney for the applicant. With me is Tariq.
Tariq Mahmood.
And he is the applicant manager for the beer and wine license that we seek. The location, as you indicated in the notice, is the golf station over at seven forty Chief Justice Cushioning Highway. The applicant is looking for a new license at that facility. It now is thirteen hundred square feet. It has a dump on its inside. It sells convenience products, including tobacco. Mr. Mahmood and all of his employees who sell alcohol are or will be tips drained. The, I was just being told as the next applicant will also tell you, they have engaged a company that will monitor the employees electronically, visually, and make sure that everybody is carded and scanned. If somebody does not follow protocol, the manager will be notified immediately for action to be taken. So that's, this is the first one of my clients that has utilized that, that system. No alcohol product can be sold unless it's scanned in, obviously. It'll only be sold during the times of the licensed hours. The beer and wine will be segregated into a different cooler. Those doors will be locked when it's not time for alcohol to be sold. This is the first license at this facility for this and we think it's an appropriate applicant and will be a service to the town. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have questions?
Kind of, yeah. So thank, thank you for coming. So I noted in the application the hours are oh five hundred to twenty one hundred, Monday through Sunday, with a comment perhaps extending to twenty two hundred. Based, what, what would that be based on and what would trigger changing the closing hour?
So I, I'm not sure exactly what we're, I'd have to look at the application. Do you understand the question?
Yes, so normally we close at nine PM.
Yeah.
So even though we try to open it when we took it over to see if we can get some sort of a business as well, but after eight thirty, nine o'clock is, you know, there's no business. So we probably keep it at the same time as well, you know, at the twenty one hour, hundred hour or so. So we might not be extending the hours of operation.
And is it your intent to have liquor on sale and available during your opening hours from oh five hundred to twenty one hundred?
Whatever the time, you know, the timings or the laws are. So we will open and close or sell beer and wine on those designated hours.
I think that's for the town to decide and obviously you can't sell it in the morning on Sundays.
And so as you go into the, the building, I thank you for the sketch, but it was hard for me to decipher it. Is it the intent to have the whole back? Were those coolers? I think there's milts and Gatorades and other?
No, so our intention is to, onto the left side.
Okay.
We have the Fontaine drink.
Okay, yeah.
And Pepsi cooler, so that area will be designated for beer and wine.
Okay.
So we can keep the, you know, in a lock and have access to it.
Okay.
So when anybody, if we're not supposed to sell at five in the morning, six in the morning, they will remain closed.
Okay.
And locked until the allowed hours are to be sold.
Okay.
The alcohol, they will be opening it and the customer can have access.
So I'm curious, how, how do you pick what you're going to sell in that space? Like how much wine, how much beer? Are malt beverages, like the, the Trulies and the White Claws and all of those flavored alcohol? Is that a malt? I don't even know what it is.
I think it is.
Yeah.
We're now looking to go crazy. Obviously, it's a sea store. Obviously, we have a, you know, dedicated scare footages as well. So we are planning to do small version, obviously maybe four feet for beer, for the wine. Maybe sixteen for, for the beer as well, you know.
Okay.
Obviously, everything is sells based on the neighborhood demands, you know. So, you know, might have a clientele different Quincy, Awemut, and then Cohasset, you know, so based on those, you know, so you can obviously start with something small, not crazy big as well, you know. You know, so we're now looking to expand. We're looking to stay in that area only.
I've had these questions for other clients who sell petroleum products and they, they make their money off the convenience products, the tobacco, the bread, the eggs, and that sort of thing. And it's a convenience store. So it's just another product for them to sell to get customers.
Right, well, because it's three eighth quarter and I'll probably ask the same questions for the next applicant. But the three eighth quarter is where Cohasset has all of their package stores and it's very competitive. You know, with Curtis Liquors on the south end, you know, which is quite a large, they just renovated, they expanded their space. I don't know if they doubled their space. So I'm just kind of curious as, in terms of, you're not thinking of it strategically to change your business, but just provide a service?
It's a different kind of customer, I think.
Okay.
For people that run out and they realize they aren't, they don't have bread and they don't have milk or they want to pick up a six pack of beer, I think that's where we're.
Okay, okay.
I don't think we're going to sell a lot of cases of beer like Curtis liquor.
Okay.
Be a small amount, small.
Are there others who have any questions? And so we did just get, there's a question in the back. Oh. Yes.
I, I, I'm here representing the Vidant Center, which is bucks, that whole area.
Sir, could you come up? Because people online can't hear. You need to identify yourself with.
My name is David Akron.
Here you go. Yeah, watch the cord so you don't hurt yourself. Thank you.
My name is David Akron. I'm the, I'm the secretary of the Vidant Center. I come with a little petition from the head minister and the vice president. Two concerns that we have. That if the changes in the store bring an increased traffic flow, our, our concern is that that intersection has been designated through the years is very dangerous. So if you're coming down three A from Hingham into Cohasset, you're turning a left. I just want to read a tiny bit of this article from the Patriot Ledger. Transportation planners analyze local and state crash data for six intersections and rank the one at Beechwood Street as the worst with fifty-seven crashes in the past five years. So we're concerned about any increased traffic that would exacerbate that problem. The other problem that we personally have is we're thirty-five acres of woods and those woods line Beechwood Street around the corner. And we're constantly cleaning out liquor bottles that are thrown on our lawn. We, we know that it's mostly young people who want to bring their car from any police intervention. But it's, it's, it's a large job to keep cleaning those up. So we're just expressing these concerns to you that if there's another liquor outlet, these problems would be exacerbated. I'll just leave these with you. Thank you, thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. And Mr. Lampke, I see you have your, Attorney Lampke, I see you have your hand up. Is there something that you want to add in?
Yes, good evening, members of the board and Mr. Sullivan and other members of the audience. In the presentation or explanation, I heard, I thought I heard someone saying that the opening hour would be oh five hundred, which if I'm not mistaken, is five AM. And I just wanted to ask the board to please clarify the hours that the liquor would be sold or available for sale and be sure that that's included in the motion for clarity.
Okay, so with respect to the hours of operation, can you clarify exactly what the opening hours are? As, as it relates to when the liquor portion will be unlocked?
So the store is open at five AM in the morning. One of the reasons why, because you have a Dunkin and there's, you know. But again, the, the beer and wine business, we will lobby survey before eight o'clock.
Eight AM?
Eight AM in the morning till nine.
Okay, okay.
Is, is that the time our current establishments, package stores are allowed to open? Or?
Yes, that's the schedule.
Okay. So it strikes me that the questions before the board are the public need because we do have Curtis Liquor already, another package store right across the street next to Shaw's. We have another one up near Stop and Shop. We have another proposal for a gas station. The poor, if I understand it correctly, the poor gas station. So we're, you know, we're putting a lot of liquor licenses and these are our last two for the beer and wine in, concentrated in the same area, which may be okay, but we are concentrating the last of our licenses in a place that already has a lot of options for consumers, for a small town. So I think there's that issue for us to consider in terms of what really is the, the public need. That means that there can't be, for example, any other licenses granted to a business in the village or
West Corner.
West Corner or, you know.
Beechwood, winning.
Beechwood, if the new general store, you know, we're really focusing a lot of the licenses in a very small area and leaving out the rest of, of Cohasset, which you know, the harbor, some of which may have a desire, need to serve those communities. So I do think that is the calculus for us to consider because we do only have two licenses left. This has been a concern in a good way, that people want to come and invest in the community and, you know, bring business, which I think is great, but here I do think the question is, is the demand satisfied in this three A stretch? Do we really in fact have a public need? Is there a demonstrated public need beyond what is already being served by Curtis that's just two blocks away? And so I raised this for the board's consideration, including that we could be looking at the last two licenses going to three A.
It's that. I'm also more concerned about the safety factor. That's a dangerous intersection. You don't want to expand your business, but that is a really bad intersection. What worries me is what that gentleman was just speaking about. And also the just people whipping into there. You know, oh, Jesus, I forgot a six pack, whipping in, whipping out. And so that does pose a problem for me as well and we are down to basically two risks, maybe three liquor licenses to.
Two.
So I think that's a big concern for the board, for this board member anyway. It's just a little strip, these fabric stores up and down.
We're not looking to entertain new customers, so we are offering to our existing customers who shops in, you know. So I don't think that this is going to bring new customers, you know, just come out of the way to shop or replace, you know.
It's not that, just an accidental forgetting a six pack. I'm not saying to you, but also what the chair just said is that we're limiting all of Cohasset to three A.
The only thing I guess we would say to that is these licenses have been available and these two applicants applied. There's, nobody's applied from downtown in the village.
Yeah.
Well, I, but I don't, I think this was available for someone else to apply for. It didn't happen. I think the person who is across from Shaw's used to be down in the village and wasn't able to survive down there up to three A. I think that's sort of the reality of it. And I think here, this applicant is trying to cater to his existing base. With respect to safety, it's not like this is a bar and people are leaving there intoxicated. This is packaged liquor that is being provided to people along with other, other products. You know, we're not Shaw's and, and we're not Curtis. We are providing smaller packaged goods that people buy and probably pay a premium for because of the convenience that they can get their gas or they can get coffee. And there has been a demand for it. Other towns have done the same thing. Brockland was, is a permanent golf station over there on Bond Street. And it, it seems to work. I mean, I think most of the retailers will tell you that the profit margin is on the packaged goods. The convenience store goods, it's not on the sale of guests. And that's what's keeping them competitive.
And I was just very, at a very dangerous intersection. That's my concern.
And, and our response, I'm, I'm not trying to argue with you, is, is that we're not looking to increase traffic. We're just trying to cater and sell more products to our existing customers.
I think it's Cohasset, we have liquor licenses for the convenience of the public and serve the whole town. And the point that the harbor, which is being redeveloped and Beechwood, which is being redeveloped and has been historically a little bit ignored, have no source of liquor whatsoever. And the three A corridor has all the rest of them. I think it's a pretty compelling argument for a board that has to weigh all of the, all of the, of the community. The, when the liquor store left the downtown, there were some ownership issues going on there which contributed to why they left. It had been a long, long, long serving for years, liquor store, specialty wine store and things changed. But I don't think that we should have everything along three A and then shut down the harbor. If there's an argument, people getting off their boats might want to get liquor. Beechwood, we finally have a historic general store reopening. Can't imagine that they would not want finally reopen, have a liquor license. So although I'm very sympathetic, although I must say the, the traffic in that area, all of our liquor stores are, not all of them, but one, two, three of them are with a stone's throw of each other right there. And I'm sympathetic for your, your business needs. I don't think your business needs liquor to be successful there. Previous one did quite well. But I really would reluctantly not vote in favor of, not in anything opposed to what you guys are doing or your business model. But in fact, as we're responsible for the well being of the whole town and the town would not be well, well served by remaining those other areas remaining unders, un-served.
Okay, so I just looked up Curtis Liquors. They're open nine to nine, Monday through Thursday, nine to ten Friday, and Saturday at eleven to six on Sundays. So I would think if they're the bellwether in town for liquor store openings, I don't think anyone's going to open any earlier than that. So, so FYI. And Attorney Lampke, this might be inappropriate to bring up, but the next applicant is a related party to this current applicant. And they're asking for the same type of license within a mile and a half stretch of each other and the same type of, you know, format. And one, you're going to be competing against each other. Which I guess that's up for you to do, but I, I don't, I don't know. Attorney Lampke, is, can you talk, can we talk about both applications at the same time or do they have to be dealt with separately?
They would need to be dealt with separately because members of the public may be there for one or, or the other.
Okay.
But, you know, I, I'm not aware of the relationship between the, the two applicants. But the fact that they may be related is, is not really a, a matter that deals with, is there a need in suitability of the applicant?
Okay. Okay.
I understand why you would be concerned, but it's not really a, a matter that you can take into consideration.
Okay, thank you. So one question that I would put to the applicant is, is there any evidence or information that you can point us to that demonstrates that Cohasset has a public need for alcohol at this particular location?
So this location sells tobacco and, and grocery products and other, and customers have asked, you know, do you sell beer and wine? Can you get a license for beer and wine? And that's sort of, that need is what caused the owner operator to pursue it. And And there's no question, but that it would be a supplement to his business and his customers who already service it have asked for.
Okay, so this is based on, how, how many customers have requested?
I, I, I don't, I don't have a number. I don't know if Tariq does either, but it's something that is reported to him by his employees regularly.
And also the previous owner, Bob Thury, have strongly recommended himself because they've been asking when he was operator and owner as well at that location.
Okay, so the prior owner recommended it as well. Okay.
Sorry, please. So I'm a former retailer and when you have commodities that are your higher margins, like you said, your packaged goods, in order to drive your profits, you would expand and have more shelf space for the, for those higher margin products as opposed to, I'm not going to call alcohol a lost leader, but you said the margin in alcohol isn't all that high. So are you concerned about the balance of your merchandise and how it's going to contribute to your profitability?
I think I said the margin on gasoline isn't all that high.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, margin on alcohol is good.
Yeah, that's why, so I do a lot of this kind of work, as Lampy knows, and you know, 10 years ago, there were no gasoline stations that sold beer and wine. Now, I, I can't think of many towns that don't have. And it's because to stay competitive, they're, they're finding they gotta have tobacco, they gotta have beer and wine and they gotta have groceries. And the market is, it's not on gasoline.
But up until, you know, so heading north on 3A, the next closest gas station is beyond Hingham Circle. And heading south on 3A, the next closest gas station is, what's that? It's beyond, it's beyond the situat public safety building. And I forget what the name of that cross street is, but there's a
Sanoco.
A Sanoco before you get about a half a mile north of where the high school, the school complex is. So it's kind of a captive audience, the mobile and the golf have in terms of, of gasoline, because you, you have to drive a couple of miles if you're on empty and you know, the red lights are dinging, you're not going to want to drive. So you, so you do have a captive audience for gasoline.
And there's now a mobile on the Driftway.
Which is even further south.
Right.
Stop and Shop.
Oh, it's Stop and Shop gas, right?
I don't believe any of our gas stations have offered any beer or the other gas stations.
I'm not taking the mic to answer your question. To me, what I think the issue really boils down to is we've got two of these licenses left.
Yep.
And we're being asked in this particular application to provide one of these licenses in a location that I think is already pretty well-served for this product. So, and we have areas of town that aren't well-served for this product, even though we don't have applicants in front of us. I'd be reluctant to approve the license for an area that is already well-served for a business that seems to be doing all right without it.
I would agree. And I think for purposes of the record, just to round that out a little bit, we do have Curtis that is a few blocks away. We've got a liquor store directly across the street in Shaw's complex. We have one that is in the next commercial complex in the Stop and Shop. That's when you go down the street. And so we do have a lot of competing.
Old Colony.
We have Old Colony too. That's right. So we have a lot of service for the public already through 3A. We don't, to my knowledge, have any beer or alcohol already being served in any competing gas stations along 3A, including that poor or the Stop and Shop gas station. And I do think that we know that Beachwood, based on numerous state studies, NA PC Mass Dot has identified that 3A Beachwood intersection is a pretty bad one, which isn't my primary concern, but it's certainly a consideration. And so I think the record, to your point, Chris, reflects that we do have a well-served population based on all of those liquor stores throughout 3A. We don't have that same level of concentration of service in any other portion of Cohasset, including the burgeoning ones from a development standpoint. So is there anyone else that would like to add anything? Nope. I would suggest to the extent that the board is disinclined to move forward with this application, that I think that we would probably be best served by concluding that notwithstanding the suitability of the applicant, the location itself doesn't meet the public need for Cohasset based on all the factors I just outlined. And there is a concern about the congestion and safety of that particular location as well. And that we deny the license at this time. Which we can reconsider later on, but at this time we deny the license.
And I might further add, as has already been pointed out, we do know that there is a store that's built in Beachwood, which is probably our most isolated part of town. It takes a long time to do a historical reconstruction, but they're doing that. And also that in the Harbor condo development, part of the zoning does require that some of the, that there do be some potential retail there. And that is also under construction. So as to any argument that people have had time to apply, not in these two locations, which are the ones most egregiously, not just underserved, but not served. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion at this point? As it relates to the application to deny the application for all the reasons described by the board in the record?
I would make the motion, the board denies the applicant. For all the reasons stated above, it's nothing on the applicant, which you all the best, but I would make the motion that would, at this point in time, deny the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move along to the next hearing, which we're trailing by 20 minutes. So this is a I'm going to read the public hearing notice, just to make sure I have the absolute correct one. This was supposed to start at 7:20, a public hearing for, how do you pronounce your last name? Zenab?
Zenab Inc.
Zenab Inc. Okay, thank you. I want to make sure I get that right. For Zenab Inc., doing business as Cohasset Mobile for new off premises, section 15 wine and malt beverages package store. So I'm going to read the public notice. Sorry, this is painful for all of us. Okay, the Cohasset Select Board acting as liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 at 7:20 PM at 91 Sawyer Street, Wilcox Commons Cohasset Mass to consider the application of Zenab Inc. DBA Cohasset Mobile for a new off premises, section 15 wine and malt beverages package store. The proposed manager is Mohammed Akram Abid. The licensed premises are located at 190 King Street Cohasset Mass. The premises consist of approximately 1,000 square feet of a store supporting a gas station, coffee shop and store. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohassetma.org or in person at the hearing. The public can attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda when posted. The agenda will be available online at www.cohassetma.org in the meeting slash hearing notices of calendar section located at the bottom of the front page of the website. The full application is available in the Select Board office.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Walter Sullivan and I am the lawyer for the applicant for the location at the Cohasset Mobile at 190 King Street. Zany, with me is the proposed manager, Mohammed Abid, and also a, a member of the corporation. So similar application, obviously, this is a petroleum station, also selling coffee, but not Dunkin' Donuts. It's styled as pork. And there's a drive-through at the intersection. They are looking to supplement the products that they sell. They believe there's a need that their customers have, have indicated support for selling additional products. Like the last applicant, they have retained a third-party contractor that will visually observe and make sure that employees are parting all people that file alcohol products. All of the people that serve alcohol and sell alcohol will be tips trained and certified. Different than the last applicant is there is no direct to butter or even by anybody within a mile selling beer and wine. We think there is a need and that this will satisfy a need. There are two means of ingress and egress into the parking lot. And we believe it's a safe place to satisfy an additional need for beer and wine license. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, does anyone have any specific questions? Anyone starting with this, to this application?
Isn't there a liquor store? Isn't there a liquor store in
Stop and Shop Plaza, yes.
That's right next door to you.
If you go take a right, there's no, all the way in Hingham, so a couple of miles, there's no store.
Okay, but there's one right next to it. Literally a buddy.
Yeah, that's my mistake. I, I forgot about that.
It's easy. Why I had to kind of think for a while.
And there's one before you get to Hingham, in the Old Colony, next to the MBTA parking lot.
About a mile away.
North.
Okay. So certainly this is a, a different location, still has similar issues in terms of limited liquor licenses or beer and wine. And a lot of existing service through 3A, including one that is right next door. I think maybe the differentiating factor here is that this is probably a worse intersection than Beachwood because it lacks a stoplight that has been a pain point for many decades at this point. I appreciate that the retort will likely be that you're going to serve existing customers, which I would expect. I think that you're already doing a great job serving customers with the the poor business, the donor business, you've really revitalized that. And I think that people, you know, like that store as well as the other one. I think it's probably just going to be the same concerns as the last license in terms of the need is already being served. And like the last one, this is a very, very dangerous intersection, probably worse actually, because there's no stoplight. There's been a huge amount of accidents, the most I think in Cohasset are at that particular intersection. So I would have a similar approach on this license, but happy to hear more from other members of the board.
I'm in the same place on this one. I think it just comes down to, we've only got so many licenses and we've got a big town to cover with a few licenses. People like this area, similar to the area that we just discussed, is already well-served. And I'm reluctant to put another license in the area.
I would second that.
Agreed.
Okay. So I think just to clarify for the record, that the board is concerned that there is not a demonstrated public need in this particular location, given the fact that we already have a number of other existing alcohol sellers throughout 3A, including one that's a block away. And then another one shortly up the street, as well as the other ones farther down at the Shaw's complex and the Curtis Liquor Complex as well. So we're looking at four existing stores that already sell beer, wine, liquor within about a mile or so. And we also are concerned about the safety and congestion of that particular intersection, which the state and numerous studies over the years, including NA PC Mass Dot have routinely found is the most dangerous one in Cohasset, including because of the lack of a light. So for those reasons, would anyone like to make a motion at this point? And you can add whatever reasons you want.
I would move to deny the application for the reasons discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Let's do real co-vote. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Thank you.
Sean and Chris, now we are onto the next one, which this is the Whiskey Wine Cohasset Inc., doing business as whiskey and wine Cohasset to receive the transfer of an off premises, section 15, all alcohol beverages package store license held by Liquid Beverages Inc., DBA Wine Spirits Depot. So it's not totally clear to me what exactly is going on here. Let, let me actually do the public hearing notice right. I'll open the public. Is there anyone from Whiskey Wine here? Mr. Demakis is on, okay, great, great. I just wanted to check on that. Let me open the hearing then. All right. The Cohasset Select Board acting as local licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, 7:30 PM at 91 Sawyer Street, Wilcox Commons Cohasset Mass to consider the application of Whiskey Wine Cohasset Inc., doing business as whiskey and wine Cohasset to receive the transfer of an off premises, section 15, all alcohol beverages package store license held by Liquid Beverages Inc., doing businesses Wine and Spirits Depot presently located at 380 CJC Highway Unit F, and to transfer the location to 390 Chief Justice Highway Unit 105. The proposed manager is Atashi B. Patel. The store consists of approximately 4,224 square feet. There is one main entrance exit to the store and an emergency exit to the rear. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohassetma.gov. More in person at the hearing. The public can also attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda when posted. The agenda will be available online at www.cohassetma.gov in the meeting slash hearing notice of the calendar section located on the bottom of the front page of the website. Full application is available in the Select Board office. All right, I think we have, sir, if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself for the record, are you here for the applicant?
Yes, I am. My name is Gregory Demakis. I'm an attorney with Law Offices in Lynn. And I'm here on behalf of Hitesh Patel, who has established a corporation known as Whiskey Wine Cohasset Inc. to purchase Wine and Spirits, Spirits Depot, which is currently located at 380 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. But we're asking, we're going to remove the premises slightly, same landlord to 390. And Hitesh Patel is a very accomplished person. He's 48 years old. He has a bachelor of science degree in, in, in chemical engineering from Northeastern. He's been running hospitality management company since 2001. He's going to be the sole stockholder, officer, director, and he's everything in this particular corporation. He is also going to be the manager. He is tip certified. I got a tip certified certification today and all of employees will be tip certified. There will be a change of the DBA. Right now, the DBA is Wine and Spirits Depot. And it will be changed to Whiskey and Wine Cohasset. And as I said, we've entered into a lease for, for, for the premises at 390 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Those premises will be 4,224 square feet. We have an asset purchase agreement. You've got the tax certificates. I thi- I think we have provided everything that, that's required on the license application. And I believe Mr. Patel is here online also to answer any questions you, yes, he is, to answer any questions you may have. But basically, even though we're going to move, we, we are going to move the location slightly and we are going to change the name, but it will be the same type of an operation. We, we, we are gonna move the location slightly, and we are going to change the name, but it will be the same type of an operation.
All right, um. Are there any questions that the board has?
Where exactly are you moving it to?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Where exactly are you moving this, the new business to?
They're moving it to, there's a new building about, I don't know, about a hundred feet away, fifty feet away. It's owned by the same landlord. Donald Stasco, trustee of the Cohasset Realty Trust. And, um. And once, once the license is approved, we're gonna do a build-out. My client's gonna do a build-out, um. Of those premises, um, but it's, it's really next door. It's, it's really going next door.
Uh, the reason I'm asking, is that close to the new, uh, golf place?
I'm sorry, my name is Hitesh Patel. It's actually right next to the Stop and Shop Plaza, right, right there, you know, right in front of it, actually.
So right next to the new golf place, the virtual golf.
Yeah, I, I believe so, yeah. That's in the same plaza, the new one. So basically, it's, it's kind of in the same parking lot, but we are, this one is existing, one is on the other side. And then there's a new building, Leonard will build a new building in between the, where the Stop and Shop is, and the old one is, you know, the center of the bank and all that. So. This one is like, I mean, they give us an opportunity to see if we can move, if we want to move in, and we kind of think that it would be beneficial for the business and also. For the, for the guest who's coming to shopping in the, in the Stop and Shop Plaza also, you know.
Are there questions that the board has?
Yes. It's okay, um. As I was reading through the application, I understand, Mr. Patel, you have licenses in eight other locations. For our, uh, package stores and for our hotels.
Yes, actually, I'm actually, uh, I'm a partner there, a minority partner there on the four of the hotels. And for, um, the, the liquor stores, you know, package stores. And I do not actually operate any, any, any of the stores, you know, it's just my family. It's in the family, so why, you know, it's my cousins or my uncles or somebody owns it, and they give me a small partnership. That's, that's how I got involved in the liquor store.
Okay, so you're not a named manager in any of those other eight locations?
No, no, I am not.
Okay, um, because in the application, it's indicated that you will be the manager, which requires you to be on pre- premise forty hours a week.
Yes, that I will be the manager on this, uh, on the, on, on this new one, and I will be actually operating it on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, um. Not, and not to share confidential information, but you, you, it's fair to say you live in Metro West? The Metro West area?
No, I, I currently live in the, the, the. Not a, yeah, a little bit Metro West area, yes.
Okay, okay, um. And then your resume is very impressive, and, and your degree is very impressive. It states that you're, um. Since January two thousand and one, you've been working as general manager for the Jamson Hotel Management Company. And also simultaneously since August of two thousand and seven to present as Director of Operations at Comfort Inn. So you're a busy guy.
Yes, so actually, I will be leaving those jobs for, for this business, because I, until now, those are jobs, and I, I'll be involved in the business now, you know, so.
Okay. Because I was just wondering how you could split your time.
No, 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 I will be full-time. I'll be keeping those jobs and, uh, working full-time in the stores.
Okay, so, so this will be your full-time priority professional venture?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Patel, just one question. Uh, now, is there any relation between your business and the, the new. Uh, virtual golf business going up next door to where your, your proposed businesses?
No.
Okay.
And, and I just want to clarify, this, this is a simple question, but I was having trouble tracking it. So it's just a change in the location of the business. Out of the existing location into the new building and a change in ownership. It's those two things that are part of this transaction, is that right?
Right, and we're also going to change the DBA, um, and ob- obviously, we're asking for the appointment of Mr. Patel to be the manager.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience, including you, Mr. Lampke, um, issues that we might want to consider?
Um, perhaps, uh, the attorney for the applicant can give some more information on when they intend to. File for the change in the DBA, uh, because if the board approves this, uh, application. Uh, the Select Board's office then processes it and sends it into the A B C C. Um, and they then go through a review and, and ultimately either approve it or reject it. Uh, so if the DBA or any of the information is going to be changed on the, uh, application. Uh, the sooner that is done, the, the, the better, so that it doesn't require, uh, a major change with the A B C C.
Well, on the application, we do, we do say the DBA is whiskey and wine Cohasset on the first page.
So what is the change? Uh, I thought I heard you say that there was gonna be a change in the DB, in the DBA.
Well, it's currently, it's currently Wine and Spirits Depot, under the old, under the old current own. But under, but we've, on, on, on the, uh, first page of the application, we said the entity name is Whiskey Wine Cohasset Inc. And, and they will be doing business as whiskey and wine Cohasset. So that's the, that's the DBA that, that it will be.
I, I thought you were suggesting that there was gonna be a change in, from the application, but.
Uh, no, no, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry for the confusion, no.
No, that's okay. I, I don't have any, uh, uh, questions, uh, uh, I will say it was a, a very well put together, uh, application. Uh, as, as were the earlier two applications by Mr. Sullivan, but, uh. I was impressed by the level of detail on this application.
Oh, thank you.
I just have one more follow-up. The current store, uh, Wine and Spirits, how big is that store?
It's about three thousand thirty-two something, I believe the square foot is.
And how big are you planning on going? I'm sorry?
Four, four thousand two hundred and twenty-four square feet.
So an extra thousand square feet, give or take, because I seem to think the other store is a little on the smaller side. Um. So we're going over, uh, over a thousand square feet is my guess of it.
Yes, a little bit over a thousand square foot, yes.
Um, so just to get a sense of the board right now, uh, well, I would just put it out there that. This is an existing license, an existing location, a location change is. Not significant, um, it's still in the same complex. And it sounds, um. From our attorney, Attorney Lampke's review, as well as the investigation conducted by the police, that. Um, there's nothing in the application or the background research that would. Indicate Mr. Patel would have any issues, um. And so I would be inclined to move forward with this particular application. Um, but I just wanted to put that out there in case anyone had any concerns that we needed to discuss or address.
I think it's important to, to note that this is a, an existing business that is essentially staying to the same position. This is not a new one, it's very different from some of the other ones that, so. These owners chose to sell their business. We have a qualified, um, new owner. Really know, um. Really no substantive change to this, so I would support as well.
Um, could we just land on the hours of operation real quickly and confirm, because. Most of our existing businesses, as Ms. Marr read earlier, are from approximately ten o'clock to eleven o'clock. At night.
Oh, this is what they're applying for.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
Uh. So you're applying for ten, ten A M. until eleven o'clock at night? Is that correct, seven days a week?
Yes.
I think Sunday it's eleven to six.
Eleven to six on Sunday? Is that correct, or those the hours that are on play right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Um. Any concerns or questions about the hours? No? All right, okay. Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone could hear. Mr. Grady was saying he had some concerns about the, the, uh, parking and the location. Um, because it is quite a bad location, although I will say that this one at least has a stoplight. To help address those issues, um, and there's many less accidents at this particular stoplight. So, we have, if we are going to approve this motion, we do have language in the packet, um. This was actually, uh, email that Tracy sent at one thirty-five P M. If anyone would like to make the motion to. We have a proposed motion to approve the application for a transfer of ownership of a package store license from Liquid Beverages Inc. Doing business as Wine and Spirits Depot to Whiskey Wine Cohasset Inc. Doing business as whiskey and wine Cohasset. Natasha Beha Patel, manager, and the transfer of location for said license from three eighty CJC Cushing Highway to three ninety. Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Subject to the following conditions. Are there any conditions that we would like to add?
Yeah, just the modification of hours. The application was seven days, ten A M. to eleven P M. And that Sunday would be eleven A M. to six P M. And keep with our standards.
Okay. So if we add those particular hours into the suggested motion, would anyone like to make the suggested motion I just read? With the hours that Ellen just identified?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Lampke, is that sufficient for the record?
Yes, it is.
Clear, okay. Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Mr. Grady abstains, we have four ayes, okay? Thank you, Mr. Patel, good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you have no further, uh, questions that I can assist in, uh, I will say good evening and, uh, move on.
All right, thank you, Attorney Lampke. We appreciate your assistance.
Yeah, all right, thank, thank you. Bye now.
All right, we're at the draft. I should have asked, I presume there were no comments from the audience?
Okay, anytime there is, just feel free to yell out, um, all right. We are at the draft capital plan, a little bit late, that's okay, um.
So I think. We need two of these. So I think I want to receive a copy of the plan, um, it is still changing. Um, we get new requests and some requests fall off daily based on quotes received. Um, we can tell you as of right now, if you want to go through all the requests one by one, or if you want to go total. How do you want to approach this?
Well. Unless anyone disagrees, I would suggest that we zone in on any new requests and the school requests that we had previously honed in on. Um, just to close those loops.
So, so a new request here is. Is obviously the temporary lease space in One Pleasant Street. Um, we layered this into the plan. Um, the temporary lease space comes along with the relocation expenses that we've been asked about. Um, we've broken down all those relocation expenses based on what we need to move in. Um. Prior to annual town meeting and the funding mechanisms we will use. And also the money we will actually ask for capital, um, to satisfy the remaining amount. So the one-time cost for One Pleasant Street is two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. We come to that total because that is two months rent. It's outfitting the space with cameras, furniture, the D S X system, which is our badge system. Um, telephony, the one, four, three and A V equipment needed to broadcast meetings. Um, it's a vault, it, the vault, the moving, um. And what we did is we took out the A V equipment and the cameras from the. The original request to move in prior to town meeting. Um, certainly because we don't need that for the initial move, it's something that can be added after the fact. Um, so the total request is one hundred and ninety-six thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, that amount, it's here, laid in, and we're gonna, we were talking about funding that through ARPA. Um, I think everyone has seen the remaining ARPA funds available. Um, so we have approximately a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in ARPA that can be repurposed. Um, to this project if so desired. Um, and the other thought process was to go to advisory for the remaining seventy, forty thousand dollars. Um, we would then ask capital budget for fifty-four thousand dollars. And that would then complete the A V equipment and the camera system. Um, there's been a lot of concern, um, as to if we outfit this building and we're leasing it for five years, what do we do with all of this when we leave? Do we just leave the building, leave it all there? Um, we've since learned that the cameras can be reused, um, obviously the furniture can be reused. Um. The D S X, um, actual equipment can be reused. Um, and obviously, um, the vault would remain, um, in some of the A V equipment can also be transferred. If we were to vacate that building. Um, the other requests that have been added. Um, or removed, the bus parking lot for the schools has been removed. Um, they are locally monitoring, we'll be forward with that, so that's a removal of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the school stabilization fund. Um. And you will see the replacement of all projectors, that price has come down significantly based on a new quote received. So that is now at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars versus the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that was out before. Um, with all this being said, we are at a total of two point one million dollars. We have priority two items here that can be funded if in fact any of these other items fall off. Um, there are items eligible for C P C, but all in all. Of the two point one million dollars, we have, uh, a debt payment of five hundred and five thousand dollars that. Um. We have to satisfy, um, therefore leaving us with, um. A total of one point four million dollars. There is. Unfunded. Um, requests here for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we would then have to, um, take from the stabilization fund. Or we can do a short-term borrowing for the, um, elder affairs H V A C system. So that's high-level, I'm sure there's several questions.
Okay. Um, why don't we start at the top and quickly go down and just ask questions off the items? Does anyone have any questions relating to the facilities-related items, items two through five? This is the, uh, middle school, high school, fire alarm repair engineering study. Is this just for the study? Does it encompass any actual repairs?
Just for the study.
Should we be building in funds for the actual repairs?
So they're, they are building in funds, um. Well, they're not building in funds yet, but that would be a project in the following year, so they're not building in funds for that just yet.
Okay. Good, um, that was my question. Does anyone have any other questions on the facilities line items, uh, at rows two through five?
Shocked that the fire alarm repair.
Shocked that the fire alarm repair engineering study without any repairs. Is this expensive? So I have to ask, I'm assuming this was bid out competitively and that's the competitive bid?
So it hasn't been bid yet. Typically, when you got a quote, they're getting quotes at about one point seven million, you take ten percent of that. And that's usually typically what you're studying. So that's how you ask.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on the police items, rows six through nine? Vehicle replacement, electronic parking and RTF enforcement, four-by-four rescue U2V taser lease program.
I thought Chief Quigley's presentation was excellent. And the parking, electronic parking and RTF enforcement. I, I think that's a long time coming, and it appeared from the data that it will pay for itself in the revenue that we've collected, which is below really what's been issued. So I, I think that's great and it frees up staff at the RTF from checking stickers, which is good.
That's a second bite at the apple for the electronic ticketing. We did try a system that ended up not working quite right. But then technology has approved this entirely different system that has, I think, a pretty strong track record. And so we're much more comfortable with this. And again, it also seems to us bonus benefits for the RTF.
Right, and, and hopefully, I mean, if we issued seventy-three thousand dollars in fines and only collected forty-seven thousand, we, we have some room, room there to improve. The other thing that, and, and I'm not against it, but I'm curious about on the RTV, I'm gonna call it, no, Department Rescue Equipment, right? And the commentary says frequently, frequently we're helping somebody in some of these, you know, more desolate, isolated areas. Is it? And I'm just thinking anecdote, anecdotally, one a week, two a week?
Yes, Chief Quigley's on it. He's happy to answer any questions about that.
Okay. Hi, Chief.
Hey there. Great questions. And, you know, so far as, you know, it's public knowledge, we've had two suicides and one attempted suicide on the, on the railway. And that's in the last year. Beyond that, we've had a rescue in, in, on the spur trail by the, by the train station where, you know, we, we just couldn't get in there. We went in as far as we can. We actually blew the drive train on the UTV that we have now. It's just, it's not high enough and it can't carry firefighters in the stretcher and all that. So, so it, it happens, you know, probably a half thousand times a year, at least. And it's one of those things where we, we just, you know, we can't get one from somewhere else in a timely fashion. And, you know, quite frankly, these things are occurring in the state park and on state, you know, the transit line. But the state just hasn't stepped up to help us. But that doesn't help the people that need our help in the short term. So we do, we do, do use these tools and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to quantify, but, you know, it, it's like the jaws of life on a fire engine. How often do we, do we use them? But when you need them, you need them. And it is, you know, these are frontline vehicles nowadays. And we just, we're a victim of our popularity and success with these trails and, and the, the amount of people in the state park. It, it's used widely now. It's used all, all, all throughout the year. And, you know, all you had to do is go to our website and look at, you know, it, it probably at least ten rescues we've had with these, with, with the UTV that we currently have over the past four or five years. So it, so it is, it is, it is, it's be, become a necessity due to the popularity of these, these trails and parks. And this also includes a trailer as well for, for a proposed new one. So it's not, it's almost ten thousand dollars to, for a trailer for it. Because it's really, it's, it's not, not great on the road. I mean, they'll work on the road, but it's not great on the road because it's, it'll be high off the ground so it can clear snow and clear the tracks.
And without it, your choice is to walk into, right?
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to, sometimes a mile. When we blew the drive train on, on, on the other one, on, on the original unit that we have, I mean, we're trying to get through eighteen inches of snow. It just wasn't possible. You know, and officers had to go in along with firefighters, you know, almost a mile. And to the point where we, we commandeered a front-end loader from, from highway, apart from DPW. And we just had to go in and it, it wasn't pretty, but, you know, they had to move snow. We had to get that person out. You know, and, you know, we just had to set aside the environmental concerns of that. You know, we scraped down that trail, but we needed heavy equipment, you know, absent, you know, one of these UTVs.
Thank you.
Sure.
I thank you, Chief. So let's move down through DPW and Fire, rows ten through thirteen. This is the RTF scale, twenty-six ton service lift dump truck command vehicle. Do we have any questions about that?
I just, I didn't see anything in the capital budget folder. The only thing I'm curious about is the RTF scale because I'm just kind of curious about it. The other things seem to be the twenty-six ton service lift, the dump truck seem to be pretty standard replacement. Thing so I don't need to see specs on that.
So we did ask Brian Joyce to upload the RTF scale quote, so I can.
Okay, great, thank you. And the Fire Station, the command vehicle, again, that's a replacement. Right, so.
So on the Town Manager Department, this is the space lease and the one-time cost for One Pleasant. I think right here, and Michelle, I think you just went through it, we're talking about taking from ARPA slash the reserve fund, is that right?
So the temporary town hall lease space, the two hundred and five thousand dollars is just indicative of a one-year lease cost. So that's what that line is. And then if you move down to the total one-time cost for One Pleasant, which, there's been a lot of questions, is if we were to move to another location with the cost change? The costs are the cost. It's a one-time cost whether we move to One Pleasant or anywhere else in town. Because these are items we need.
And my question was the funding source. So we're, we're talking about taking the, the lease payment out of capital sta, the capital stabilization fund, right? And I know last, last meeting, when we discussed this, we talked about taking that out of free cash. And just in the interest of full transparency, I felt strongly that we should be taking this out of capital stabilization fund to be financially disciplining ourselves to getting used to paying for the town hall lease space and costs out of the capital stabilization fund because we can't really rely on free cash consistently. So we need to start building in those costs of our town hall into our existing consistent funding.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but i- is it really capital? Is, or is it really, I mean, ma- maybe to get us started, it's really operational costs. Right, rent?
You could say the same about the school bus leases, right? I mean, that's an operation cost for the buses. So that's in the capital. This is what I was, we were asked to present and yeah, but that's a very large chunk of money to put into the budget. I mean, it's, it's, it's like a quarter of the entire library budget, for example. I mean, it's not insubstantial enough money. I mean, by the way, it's a good deal. I mean, its value is very good.
But I, I think, and, and I hear you, and my, my question was not because I'm leaning that way. Because I understand, you know, I just think our, our capital stabilization fund is becoming a lease funding source for vehicles, for technology, and now for buildings. And should we not look to the operational budget over time to, you know, work it in? I'm not saying all, all at one shot, but maybe, you know, in FY twenty-six, there's fifty thousand in the operational budget and the, the lease is, you know, a hundred and fifty-five thousand and, and so on.
Yes, yes, we can certainly do that as we go forward. And for some things, we actually have that technology. We've actually built replacement costs into the operating budget. Been able to, in this case, you know, it's a, it's coming right late in the game and it's a very large chunk of money to try to.
Right, right. No, I, I understand that. But as we, as we look at, at, at budget planning five years out, if, if we're in One Pleasant Street, there's not the, the drain on utilities. I mean, we can really look at our utilities on Forty-One Highland and what we're spending monthly or annually and convert that to rent payment. Not that it's going to go to zero because until we decide what's going to happen, you have to keep the building, you know, with electricity and, and heat so it doesn't freeze. But I'm just, I'm just saying, I think we ought to look at ways to work it into the operational budget.
I do think, because we've talked about this previously, if you look at our bylaws for capital budget, there is sort of an open question. There's a gray area when it comes to these sort of items. And so I think it could go really in either direction. And I think that if we were to work it into the operating budget, that would mean maybe a commensurate decrease in our capital stabilization fund potentially. I think that would have to, it's a zero-sum game, right? If, if you pull from one area unless you're cutting something else to make room for that, which maybe is what you're suggesting.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying. It, it is that vacating Forty-One Highland Avenue should realize some cost savings that can be applied towards One, One Pleasant Street or wherever the temporary housing ends up.
Well, we can also understand it. When you're renting something, you're actually using a capital asset. So the rent is going to secure the use of a capital asset. It's a little bit easier to account for it because it's rent, which is a capital asset. You would be depreciating it and doing a lot of other things and the operational expenses for that asset. But now a good portion of that, that depreciation is kind of represented by rent. And also just, we are paying rent, but it is how we pay for our capital assets. So to change the point, it's kind of same thing. We just have to clearly understand that, what it is.
Okay. Moving on to Elder Affairs, rows eighteen through twenty, we previously discussed this, but I'm not sure if folks have any additional discussion. I see the HVAC system for five twenty-five, which we discussed.
That would be what I would consider paying for over a couple of years, actually. Not for a long-term loan, but easily affect the short-term cost.
How, how does that five twenty-five relate to?
Quote that you're looking at?
Yeah.
So the three seventy-five quote was a budget number we got that doesn't include any bidding, any engineering, any of the ancillary items. And that unfortunately, this item does have to go out to bid. We cannot use the vendor that proposed that price. And anytime you go out to bid, you, you end up driving the cost up for a premium. So we put that number in to be conservative, to make sure that we have funding available.
Yeah, because the bid sent does not include applicable taxes, roofwork, carpentry, work to repair walls, ceilings, or any electrical wiring. I, that doesn't sound like that adds up to two hundred grand, but compared to what's on the recost.
So, so that's directly from a Mitsubishi vendor. And when we go out to bid, we're not allowed to sole source.
Right, no.
So someone could come in with something else.
Right.
Which ultimately ends up driving stuff, unfortunately.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're at Recreation, the addition of repaving the Hundred Sawyer Street parking lot. I think the Roads and Sidewalk Committee is going to be coming to us with a recommendation on their list. We can see how that feeds into, for example, South Main and other roads that we might also want to pave this year. So just, I think we'll have a footnote on that. We need to remember that cost as we consider the other road and sidewalk plans that are hopefully coming our way soon. Schools. So let's just look at the school list, rows twenty-two through thirty-nine. We already went through a lot of this earlier. Again, noting what Michelle just said, that the bus parking lot at Deer Hill is off the table, so that two fifty is gone. It looks like it's a mix between the school stabilization fund and the capital stabilization fund. Are there any particular questions that folks have on any of these items?
I think, yeah, I, I shared all my questions with, with Michelle. The bus lease, electric bus, athletic van. Doesn't seem to be a cohesive plan in terms of how mu, how many vehicles they need. It looked like from some of the information in the packet that what they spent on outsourcing on athletic trips is close to, or maybe a little bit over, the, the lease for the two athletic vans. I still don't know like what teams they think are going to go. Questions were answered about coaches driving the vans. It's still the school liability, things along those lines. I don't, I don't think it's very, a very robust plan at this point. And for them, you know, the schools typically would support the bus lease in the, forgive my aging memory, in the forty to fifty thousand dollar amount. And capital budget would pick up the rest. And, and now the schools are indicating they're not able to support any of the bus lease, which they had been doing.
Well, and forgive my ignorance, but we don't have a number allocated for this, so are we not, not doing the lease?
Hundred and fifty.
Oh, I'm looking at the passenger van, sorry. Oh, the bus lease, okay.
Yeah.
And I scroll down to the athletic passenger vans, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, so maybe the, the athletic vans are off?
Put them down parts.
Oh, down, down at the bottom. I had questions on the Chromebooks. Add Chromebooks to line twenty-nine to Deer Hill because last year, special town, at annual town meeting, about ninety-four thousand dollars was allocated for iPads and accessories for Osford and Deer Hill. So I'm a little confused. This request for Chromebooks is to add them to grade three? So where did all the iPads from last year go?
I, I think they responded to that question.
They said they never had them, but or, or that the request was, last year was incorrect. I'm only asking this because this is what capital's going to ask, having lived through it for six, six years.
So, why are we still using Chromebooks too? I mean, those things, they die like instantly. We'd be well-served by investing in iPads, in my opinion, having already thrown one Chromebook in the trash almost immediately. It just does not stand out.
I think when the technology plan came out originally, I want to say like in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, it was determined that the iPads were most appropriate for the elementary age kids. And that the rigor of the older kids at middle school and high school really kind of demanded a more robust device to do work on. I've, I don't even know what a Chromebook looks like, so, but I've never, never worked on one.
Doesn't look like this.
Using iPads and just using Chromebooks is because the transition from the iPad to the Chromebook is challenging, is what I've heard.
You don't give kids enough credit.
Okay.
Kids are more tech, tech savvy than, than we are. I mean, I can keep going, but I, I don't want to bore everybody.
Well, I've, if, if you're, are there any outstanding questions you have?
I think, did the bleachers come off?
The fence and the bleachers are off.
Put that on priority two.
On priority two, okay.
They're still on the school capital list.
Okay, the, so I kind of have a problem, you, you know, philosophically with the fence in the sense that the application said, you know, to keep people off from damaging the field. Now, when we went to CPC to redo the track and to the town to fund the replacement of the artificial turf, it was for community use. And when it was done in two thousand seven and two, two thousand six, two thousand seven, it was for community use. And the application states to keep people out. So that bothers me, number one. Now, I did see that there should be a gate, so the fence is open at the walkway to the thing. And if they wanted to put a gate there, that's To the thing. And if they wanted to put a gate there, that's fine. I, I don't think the gate was there. I mean, when I went by the other night, it was, it was wide open. Um, I think a gate is fine, but. You know, to keep, with the intent to keep people off the field, I. Just rubs me the wrong way. People walk the track, uh, community members walk the track in non-school hours. And then the alumni field bleachers, um, I was there several times this fall. I don't know what parts are crumbling and not usable. So, which was again in their application. And I knew, so the first conversation was, well, it's to add a section for the visitors. But then the application says, well, because some parts are unusable.
They're, they're suggesting it's the visitor section.
So the visitors' bleachers are across the field and they're, they're, they're not, they're, they're, they're. I don't know if it's one or two, three row. Aluminum structures with fencing behind. They're not brand, but I wouldn't say they're unusable. So I'm glad they're on the bottom of the list. Okay.
If I could just briefly chime in, uh, the Asgood generator. So I, I continue to be of the opinion that. That seems like a lot of money for something that I expect to be used to keep the pipes from freezing, because. Running on a generator, probably not sending the kids to school. So that's a cost that I would like more information, or I, I also apologize in this meeting, so that was discussed.
That's okay. I think, I, their reasoning behind the generator is when we had the power outage during school hours, they chose to keep the kids in school. It was very dark, um, and they fear that if that happens again, in, in an emergency. That's the answer, but yes, I'm happy to get more information.
Fair enough. Uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars might go better towards roof tiling, some of the other priorities on this list.
And I do want to say for the schools and their capital list, they are reserving some money for the Asgood roof. Um, they're, they're reserving some of the stabilization fund money for the Asgood roof. Um, they're submitting the SOI. And part of the SOI is to make sure that there's money for schematic design available. Within, I think it's ninety days of the award. Um, within ninety days of the invitation, um, they have, you have to be able to fund the schematic design. There have been several schools that have not had this funding available, um, and therefore lost the opportunity to apply for this. So they are setting some money aside.
Should we put a line item out here then for the Asgood roof? Including a schematic design for the warrant? It seems like that would make sense because then we can, if we get some follow-up questions by the state. We can say, yeah, we're committed to it. We put it on the warrant because we are committed to it. Also too, just to reiterate something that, um. We talked about, and Chris, I don't know if you were here, so I want to. I want to say it again because I think it's maybe. Not as clearly identified here. We have three million dollars in our school stabilization fund. We have last year plus this upcoming year. So we are actually saving two hundred plus one point five million for the roofs. So we're, and, and I talked to. Uh, the school folks today, um, about the, you know, confirming on their side. I think we're all on the same page. But I just want to make sure we are on all the same page because when we go to the state. We have to be willing and able to show the state that we have the money sitting there ready. And because our residents have provided us with the opportunity to have the stabilization funds. This means that we can go to the state for a multimillion dollar roof project and say, yes, we are saving one point seven million dollars. And they can, and, and we can have the money to show for it and possibly get forty percent. Of that funding, which we would not be able to do with that stabilization fund. And so. I just, again, want to make clear to the residents that by putting money and by being willing to fund this fund, we are really. Leveraging some potential state funding, hopefully that we'll get, um, in the future, which is, is great. Because we would have to pay for all this ourselves otherwise.
I might also add on that point that our taxpayers. Residents should also be aware that the purpose of the stabilization fund was to do precisely this. It was to counter the, um, to make sure that the money was there. When we needed these types of things, so we were able to maintain our physical. Uh, infrastructure that the town after all owns and has an obligation. So this allows us to not only pay for it, would, you know, clearly when roofs need to be fixed, if you don't fix them right away. The, uh, cascading, pun intended. Costs of the water damage is astounding. So not only will we have the funds to do it. But because we were prudent, the state is going to give us that. And we should all keep in the back of our mind. That the era of a lot of unlimited generous. Money coming from the state and the feds is basically over. Still, some of it's still coming in there, but it's not going to be there, so we best be, be prepared.
Okay. Ms. Mar, um, are you raising your hand? Okay, please.
So I would just, um, and I apologize, I, I don't have it on me. Make sure, I, I would like to request that Nick Berardi reviews. His priority list that he came up with after dissecting the AI three report. And the timeline, because there were several items on his list in the one to three year. That, and they, they weren't huge money, because mo- most of the one to three year were roofs and everything associated with roofs at the three campuses. But there were some smaller items and I apologize, I don't remember what they were, but I'd like to make sure that he feels comfortable that. High priorities for him are not, that are not on this list he's okay with.
Okay.
Sorry, I said that so poorly, but.
Okay, um. So before we move to select board goals, move away from the capital plan, is there anything else? So we've gone through the school items, um. We've discussed the capital stabilization fund versus the schools. We haven't discussed the roads and sidewalks. So Paul, are. Um, I think the road and sidewalk committee is still in the process of. Outlining its recommended spend, is that?
Um, everybody now is sitting here. I've got to do my, my section of time. I've got a time. I think we'll be tomorrow to cancel, but we are earmarking all our roads, see which ones are in priority. I do know. That South Main is going to be a big ticket item and that's probably going to use up a lot of it.
But the board's good, then we're going to move this forward to the capital budget committee to start the public comment process.
So, and, and what we'll do is we'll take the items that we don't have questions about and we'll submit those first. Until we can get further clarification on the additional items.
Okay. Yes, so I think, I think that. Though, i- is it fair to say the board's direction is these are the warrant articles, you know, with a footnote on some. For later that we have questions on. These are the warrant articles that we want to move forward. The question is whether the capital budget recommends or not the particular items, right, the lineups. So, so that's sort of where we are. Again, with the footnotes on some of what Ellen asked for, and I do think Ellen brings up a good point on Nick Berardi's list. If there are other things on his list in the immediate high priority category, we probably want to. Question why they're not here.
So the capital gets to me tomorrow night, um, they're only going to listen to, um, capital's request for one Pleasant Street. And then the following week, we'll move to some of the, um. I don't want to say easier item, but. Some of the items that really are just replacements and, um, year over year requests. And then we'll, we'll wait till we get that further clarification on the schools. And we'll make sure we have Nick's priority list reviewed.
So can I ask on the one Pleasant Street review, is it ripe for capital? Because we are just looking at the lease right now. And we, I don't think I've had our lawyers go back and look at it.
So I think your intention for tomorrow evening is to vote on, um, recommending the, the lease. For a temporary space for five.
Okay. As long as they understand that, you know, the terms of the lease are not locked and loaded yet, because I think we want KP to look at those and. You know, do our normal vetting process on, on that. That lease. Um, so. That's probably a good segue to select board goals if folks are okay with, with that. Um, and. Why don't we start with the town hall relocation and update on those points?
Okay, so the town hall relocation plan, um. We have a phased move. Um, this is just a draft. What we're looking at is phasing the move, so not all the employees hit one Pleasant at once. Um, because there will be time, we'll, we'll need time for IT to set up and people to get settled. So to flood the place all at once just doesn't make a whole lot of sense for the employees, um, because we still want to be productive, um, in our workplace. So we're suggesting on May twentieth, we start moving the assessors. The finance department, the treasurer collector and IT. The reason for that is the finance team is all one. So to move them all over together makes the most sense. Um, to have IT during the first move makes sense. In case there are any challenges there with IT, they'll be on site to address them.
So can I suggest, what about HR?
So.
As a landing spot, tell you the truth.
So HR is the second phase, um, if you think it's more prudent for them to move in the first phase.
As a landing zone, so people might have questions moving, so I just think HR might, you know, as an initial landing spot.
And then so the second phase, we're looking at just a week later, and we were talking about, um, HR. And maybe we split them, maybe the generalist stays behind and the HR director actually moves during phase one. Um, permits and inspections, that's eight employees and then the DPW.
Sorry, Michelle. We should close the door. The feedback is a little bit distracting.
Thank you, Chris. People can just open it.
Thanks.
So a week later, we're suggesting that we move the entire permits and inspections team, um, the DPW and facility staff, which is, um, two employees. And the human resources staff now will be one employee, because we'll move one on May twentieth. Um, the next move will be shortly thereafter, town meeting, which will be June sixth, and that would be the town manager's office. And then June eighteen would be the town clerk. She would be the last one to move because she has her election. Um, she has to wrap that up before we move her into a new space. Um, so that's why we phased the plan the way we did. If there's any questions, happy to answer them. If there's any modifications. Happy to take feedback.
So we're planning on moving prior to town.
I think the, I think the direction, yes, was to move prior to town meeting, um, in. As stated, use some of that ARPA funding, um, and maybe reserve funds to. Pay for the move prior to town meeting.
But we still, we still need capital stabilization funds for the actual lease payment.
So the initial lease payment for two months to get us through the fiscal year, um, would be included in.
In the ARPA slash.
The ARPA slash, yep. Reserve funds.
Saying reserve fund, that's the advisory reserve fund. You know, what, what was just used out of that for the library repairs? Thirty, and what, there's like two hundred and change?
Two hundred and forty something originally in there, so.
Looking to seventy-three thousand.
It gets replenished in the budget. Every year, yeah.
But very discreet, like I think we're talking about the, um. DSX system or something that had to go in, a, a very defined project. They wouldn't, the movie would come out.
Yeah.
And this assumes the building's going to be ready by March twentieth? Like, I'm, I'm sorry, May twentieth?
So. Other than getting the four offices out of the second floor. Historic portion. The second memo from Mr. Howland indicated that if we took the measures that we're taking, the annex could remain occupied. So I'm kind of second guessing myself. On why we're pushing to move everybody when we don't have to. When we don't have a plan for forty-one Highland Ave. To me, it, it just, and I apologize to my colleagues for, for having second thoughts about this, but I, 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 I don't understand. And I've been struggling with this, why we're, we're pushing this when we don't have an answer. And it just takes me back to last November. Whatever the November date was for special town meeting, putting forth something, doing something without having a plan for, for the backside. Yet again, and are we setting ourselves up for? I don't want to use the word accusation, but it comes to mind, oh, you know, doing an end run just to get into one Pleasant Street like, like we wanted to. When we, when we don't really have to move. Out of forty-one Highland Ave with the exception of those four offices.
So I just want to provide a quick update on the four offices, um, because the fire separation walls have been installed. Um, we are planning on March eighth to move those, um, employees out of historic town hall. They'll be moved into the annex. And then a few of us are going to be displaced to, um, other town buildings. Um, so that is going to happen March eighth. Just wanted to put that out there. So we, we are getting them out of the town.
Perfect, right. So, so then why? O- other than the fact that, you know, we've been talking to this guy and we have this great lease and it's, it's brand new space. Why are we pushing to move everybody without a plan for forty-one Highland Ave? Do we have a plan? Does anybody know? Do we have anything we voted on as a plan for forty-one Highland Ave? I, I don't think we have. We have a lot of ideas out there.
We have a forum that we're going to set up. We have a number of ideas. I mean, the fact of the matter is the building's had it. And that's, I thought we'd all come to that conclusion. So now we're bouncing back to leaving the building, sitting there for the next two hundred years, falling apart.
Well, no, Paul, don't, don't exaggerate. All right. I, I would be remiss if I did not voice my concerns, and I'm not going to say I talked to a lot of people because I didn't. But I've watched the meetings, I've gone through all my notes, and I've really thought this through about why. Why are we doing it in such an accelerated manner? That's what I want to know. Why are we doing it from May twentieth, when as of March eighth, we don't have to? Why can't we do it on August first or September first, when we might have a plan? When we might have community input as to what to do with forty-one Highland Ave? Why are we leaving a building? That we don't have a plan for?
So I can tell you one thing that appeals to me is. What I think we're buying is the option to purchase the first floor, which is a very valuable option. For Cohasset residents to have essentially the potential to do a town hall. Without a tax increase, because we could likely fund that purchase out of capital budget. And my concern is if we don't do that, this opportunity. May not be available. I mean, in all the times that we've been looking around the, you know, years that I've been on the select board, we really haven't had such an opportunity to. Move our employees into a. Village location, first floor accessible with parking. In a way that doesn't require a tax increase. And it, I, I think it also frees up the opportunity for. Others to have discussions about what town hall could be other than a town hall. It could be recreation, it could be arts, it could be drama. Right now, we're sort of stuck and we can't open up the doors to more creative solutions. So I do like that. It sort of frees up the impasse on that front. And, and it gives, it gives us space to make a decision in my mind in a. Way that is, um, responsible, because we're not sort of in a panic situation where we're like, oh, my gosh, the town hall's falling apart. Like, we have to figure this out. Like, the lease will give us time to consider the option, to consider what to do about forty-one Highland. That's it, Ellen. I completely hear your concern. And I would probably be more comfortable myself if. We went to town meeting and we said. We want, we want to get approval to move into one Pleasant as a, and to do the temporary lease. And, you know, have the ability to have the option while we think through forty-one Highland instead of, you know, trying to jam it before town meeting. Because I, I do think that. I, I do think people would feel more comfortable. I, I do think people would feel more comfortable with that. That's, that's my intuition.
Also, you put it much more eloquently than Ellen, that was, you know, directing it at the, with the building sitting, I think the impetus would be to get the ball rolling on 41 a lot faster than leaving kind of a stagnant state with people sitting in it, doing work. And it's just, it's basically the status quo. And we know that there's people that want to stay there. There's a number of things. But it'll give them the opportunity to voice their opinions and come up maybe with a coaching plan for 41 Highland Avenue that people can agree on. But with people coming in and out of the building, it kind of just remains the same status that it has been for the last number of years.
Hi. To me, the missing piece in this conversation is those public forums that we've talked about before to gather public input on what should happen to 41 Highland Ave. So I do think we need to make that a priority to hear what people want and to make sure we put forward some kind of vision with cost estimates for what 41 Highland Ave would look like after a move to One Pleasant. Because I think that's what was missing in our last proposal. So if we go back to town meeting with that piece missing, that's missing the message that we received in the last town meeting.
Then we've already moved in.
I'm sorry?
And we've already moved into One Pleasant Street.
Yeah, but you have a blank canvas at 41, so that's where you get your consensus and you, you know, again, that's where I think is you have, it becomes a blank canvas, then you can get consensus on what you want to do with the building. We have the lease. And if we go back to 41, people determine that they want to rebuild the whole town hall, whatever the conclusion is, but at least you have that, that out there again, then the building is empty and so anyone's ideas can be heard on it.
Yes, Jeff.
I think we've, I, I'm glad you brought that up, Ellen. Because I think through all of the confusion, there was a real rush to do whatever. There were some, I did not agree necessarily that whatever that architect's name was, his analysis. And I, and I know our town council said we can occupy, continue to occupy the building if certain things are done. But the fact of the matter is, I don't think there was ever any kind of acceptable dealing with tho- those issues that were, were raised. That being said, we are where we are and we do have an obligation to maintain the management of the town. And One Pleasant Street is far and away the most efficient way to do it. But we do have to understand that it's very likely to be temporary. We, but we are going to have to maintain the management and the operations of the town. How that plays out and what the ultimate decision might be, I don't think we know. And we should be open to that. And we should say, you know, we, we may come down to something where in fact, the proposal that was turned down a year and a half ago might in fact be the best way to do it because people clearly want the, a town hall, a town hall on the common. We don't know, but they, up till now, they haven't been willing to pay for it. So we have all of these unresolved issues which need to be thrashed out. And we need to make sure that they're done. Meanwhile, we do have efficiently way to maintain the operations of our town and the staff. I do think that we should go into some, looking into things later on, but for now, we have looked at it, we have made our decision. And when you make a decision that makes sense and is very cost effective, I think we follow through that. And two or three years from now, who knows what is, is going to, where we may be, but for now, I think we have to, you know, you know, we bought, we're buying a horse, let's ride the horse for what we need to do. And we are going to have an awful lot of work to, to, to do with that. But, and I think the sentiments that Ellen just brought up are widely shared. And as elected officials, we're going to have to figure out, you know, how to deal with that. And it, it's going to be a challenge, but it's what we're here to do.
Well, and, and Chris, to circle back on your question about the public forum, the last select board meeting we had, there was concern by some board members that we didn't have options fully fleshed out, including whether purchasing One Pleasant was even an option if we were to like go out and, the first floor, 3.2 million, because the planning board has yet to have their hearing. So we're waiting until the first week of March to figure out, is this an option on the table? To present at a forum and to have, you know, we asked Michelle to get some real numbers on the roofs and the siding and the windows. If we were to tear down the annex, what would the cost of just preserving these? Just to have more concrete information for people to put out there. And so the intent, I think, was to get that information in the door and also get our communication specialist on board to help us run the forums, run the surveys, like March should be the bonanza month for taking in information and getting it out to figure out what, what do people really want? Do people actually want to pay 20 million to have the privilege of a town hall on our town common? Like, let's kick the tires on that. If they say, yes, we do, then we can put on the warrant 20 million dollar debt exclusion and put it on the ballot in time for June. And there you go. There's your plan.
And there might be people who want that. They turned it down two to one earlier. It was, it was an electoral flatback.
It was only six million. It turned down. But the, the way I think, Ellen's point is valid. I think it warrants the discussion that we're having here. The way I think we navigate it is we need public input on what we're doing to make sure that we don't end up without a public mandate to take up residence in that building. Even if it's on a rental temporary basis.
I mean, the, the other option, I'm just going to say, just to vet all options, is to kick the can down the road and not, not do anything necessarily at this ATM and leave it to the fall until, you know, people feel like you vetted the options more thoroughly in terms of 41 Highland. I'm not sure what additional information we might learn on 41 Highland that we can't get within the next few weeks. And we run the risk of losing One Pleasant because I think that the developer will just move along. And then we're sort of patchworking town services throughout the town, which, you know, may be the reality.
I, I, I would, I would say that we don't have time to properly vet an alternative. And that's why I think we, we stay with what we've decided. It's a relatively inexpensive way to deal with a, with a crisis problem. And I think that's kind of where we are. I don't think there's any way we could properly get the decision. And even if we got a decision, let's say we said, we're going to rebuild this whole thing. We still have to get everybody out of there. And then we still have the same problem. So we, we do have this problem. So, and the temporary, whichever way we end up, we end up with the same temporary
Needs.
Needs. And if we end up owning One Pleasant Street for five years, tell, which is probably what would take to build a new town hall, we could sell it. Or, or we could find another municipal use or probably sell it. Or if there's, if they condo the whole building, sell them as condos. But we do have an, an issue which we, where we are where we are, where we don't have a suitable place for the town officials, for the town staff to work out. We don't have that. And we're not going to have, there's, the only way that gives us that is One Pleasant. And, and I'll tell you, from the cost of getting space, it's a remarkably good deal. Because it isn't really anything much more for operations for the cost of operating town government than, than if we actually owned the building. It's actually probably a lot, you know, cheaper. And we, and we have it. And, and I think we should probably put the thing out that this is a five-year interim plan. And people should know that and that we are open to that. But let's say we, we, as Gene said, we put something out and the town says, we'll pay 20 million dollars. Where are we? We're still where we have to take the town operations and put them someplace for three or four years before we could do anything. So we'd need the One Pleasant Street option anyway. And it's cheap, just.
So I agree with you. If we renovate the building, we got to get out. If we move out of the building, we got to get out. And One Pleasant is a cost effective way to do that. I think that's the message that hasn't been clearly communicated to the community up to this point. So maybe there's a better way to do it that's not a public forum. I don't think people are, I don't think the reasonable people in town are looking for a fully fleshed out set of RFP bid costs for multiple options. I don't think the reasonable, reasonable people in town are looking for that. I just think there's an opportunity to more clearly communicate that getting into One Pleasant Street on a temporary basis doesn't block either of the two paths, which could be One Pleasant Street on a more permanent basis or back to Highland Ave on a more permanent basis.
I don't disagree with you, Chris. I think we've just been in sort of limbo because of these other personnel and information factors, you know, that are hindering us. And, and I do think that a public forum, you know, might produce like, I don't know, seven to 19 people.
Who've been here before.
Who, you know, aren't going to provide.
Who voted for One Pleasant Street.
Or, or who aren't going to maybe be representative of. So we need, we need to find a way to get representative feedback.
And to push out the message that this is enabling multiple options.
Yeah. Michelle, I feel like, oh, sorry, Ellen, you want to go?
No, I was just, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments and, and this, this is the kind of conversation we should be having on this and it should be in depth and lengthy and, you know, to me, it's halftime and what do you do at halftime? You make adjustments, right? The game's not over. We got to make some adjustments and, and that's, that's kind of where my head is that as of March 8th, we're no longer in a crisis situation. So we can take that off the table, that language off the table. We have to move, we have to move, we're in a crisis. We're not in a crisis as of March 8th. So, which is a week from Friday. And, and playing devil's advocate, we move out of 41 Highland. We know the historic part is off limits. Nothing can go on in there, right? Because of, of the lack of fire suppression. Do we run the risk of, of forgetting 41 Highland? Do we run the risk of cobwebs growing? Do we run the risk of people just, you know, having town hall fatigue and not even caring about it? And, and, and the paint peeling and the parking lot degrading and, I mean, because that can happen too. They can say, well, town hall's at One Pleasant Street, we don't need to do anything. I, and, and I also think that somewhere between 26 million, 20 million, 16.9 million and nothing is a number that, and I'd love Nick's take on this, Nick Marardi's take on this, on what, what do we really have to do in town hall?
If I'm interested, add one piece to this, and it, I, I believe having talked to Inspector Hallman, this is a lot. The interim steps which are in place are literally that. They're not, you can occupy the building for the foreseeable future until, if you're not allowed. I don't think that was the intent here. I think it bought more time, but that's a finite window. And again, I'm not going to speak for it, but that's my understanding of, of the work that's been done. It buys us time, but it's not an, it's not an unlimited amount of time. The second piece is that I don't know what the, you know, we've seen shoes drop in this building again and again and again. The elevator and electrical and other things. I'm not sure what's going to happen next. So again, I just want to, I, I'm not being Cassandra here, you know, literally Cassandra there, but, but we've had a documented history of unexpected challenges and I, I couldn't tell you when the next thing might happen. Obviously, whatever the, right now, we're operating, the last board vote said, make a plan, we're going with, we're going with One Pleasant, that's where we're going. So unless the board votes in a different direction, that's how we have to proceed. So I just want to be clear about that too. We're, obviously, we're here at the direction of the board, so, but that's the only vote that's been taken, that's where we're going.
I do think we need to continue on that, but I think we need to start being open to other things. I don't think we have any practical alternative to proceeding. I, I'm not sure we have to necessarily be quite as, have to do it right away. But I do see that that is the only viable thing because whatever happens there, we're going to have to vacate that. So when we have a place to get the staff out, which frees up all of our options and we have something and it is affordable, and I think the message we need to get is that it is a very cost effective way. And the problem, however, the ultimate solution is, the interim, what we're required to do on the interim, just a practical thing, is clear. And this is the very, it's, it's just, we are very lucky how cheap it is that we're able to do it.
So can I, can I just, as I have John Howland's letter, the, the second one, as he sent it, follow-up notice dated to the memo dated December 15th. If all of the above steps are taken, then it's my opinion that the 1987 edition fire sprinkled, fire sprinklered portion of town hall will comply with the building code and be available for occupancy. The action listed above will allow for a new certificate of inspection to be issued. So there, there's no temporary indication in that. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
So, oh, sorry, Chris. So in terms of next steps, why don't we, what, what I'm hearing is I think we need a real communications plan, including with what are we going to do, when are we going to do it, who's going to do it? Does this, you know, when, when does the select board need to be engaged, blah, blah, blah? We have another meeting coming up on Monday because we had to move it because of the presidential primary on Tuesday. That might be too quick of a turnaround, appreciating that. I know people are ill and all of that, it might not happen. If, if, another thing that I'm going to suggest is if we need to get some outside resources to assist with this, given the time constraint, where under from a warrant perspective? If, for example, we get overwhelming feedback in one direction on 41 Highland, we still have a very small window of time, we may be able to execute on that for this town meeting if there is an overarching sentiment, but we need to figure that out very quickly, like within March.
I, I think we need to come back to you on Monday with at least the beginnings of a plan with some options, because we still don't know, again, as you pointed out, that what, what the plan, the board's decision will be on, on that condo proposal. And again, I'm sorry, unfortunately, Kevin, who we were very excited to introduce tonight, got sick over the weekend, so. Kevin, Kevin Perry, our new communications person, was supposed to be coming in this night, but he got, he got sick.
He got sick on his first day?
No, second, second. He was here last week. He did great, he was great last week. Jumped in, we got a lot of tours. I figured he'd at least make this meeting before he ran away, but he didn't, so. No, he, he, so I, he's, I think he's, we're hoping to have him back in tomorrow, so. We did a whole plan last fall, right? I think that becomes a foundation for conversation for this. So I think we could tweak some of that up and then bat around ideas and you can, again, if you want to do a forum, it's, it's not like we'll do any one thing. We could do a forum, we could do a Facebook Live. We can do a survey, I think we, we talked about with Kevin already, and then Survey Monkey or something like that. So I think there's things, and, and again, I'm wanting more, for more feedback. I know Gene did a great, you know, foundation. So when the board says, hey, we like these questions, we'll. So when the board says, hey, we like these questions, we'll put them out there uh, and start generating. And, and now it's getting warmer, right? That the fields are gonna start being more active again. So then they could be surveyed, it's not in person. There's other events going. So, um, if you have any thoughts about a public event, there might be a good place to go and, you know, plug people, you know, I know we have events going on here in the senior center and at Rack and Stops.
I do agree with Gene though, Chris. I mean, time's kind of short in March. We have to do a forum. There's been pushback just by the usual suspects, just so they feel that they're heard and their ideas are out there.
The challenge with the forum, and I know you know this, is we're gonna get the ten people for whom this is the most important thing in their worlds, but there's a few thousand others that are gonna vote.
That's all the externals that we have to, I agree with every bit of it.
And that's why the communication plan is so critical to read, to reach the thousands of other people in the town whose opinions matter, but they might not have time to join a forum.
I don't disagree, I'm a hundred and ten percent behind that. All I'm saying is that then we can say, we did it. That's, you know, you have your forum. And then this is now this a public opinion, again, I agree, a hundred and ten percent.
It strikes me, we need to lock down the pricing on tearing down the annex and just having the standalone town hall. Work with Nick in the interim on that list to make sure, you know, the, and when I say the list, I mean the repair town hall as is. If there's any, you know, outstanding questions, if there's a way to draw that sixteen point eight million.
We're talking, so it's two different things, right? If we're talking repair only, it's a number. If we're talking renovation, it's a different number. So we just need more direction as to if you want repair only.
For the keeping annex, keeping the entire building as is.
Repair. Or renovate or
Oh, I, I think, I think the town has indicated that they're not interested in a number that includes renovation. Okay, it, it's been, it's been voted down. So I, I think, I think it's repair. And, you know, not to use a grotesque phrase, but sometimes if you put lipstick on the pig, it can make the place look better, right? So wha, what is paint? What is, you know, what are some of those cosmetic things that aren't part of a full-scale renovate, renovation? But I think if we come back with a renovation plan to the town, I mean, I just, five is not a lucky number.
I think.
The, the fifth time, it's not gonna happen.
I, I, I think you're right on that. The question is, can it be repaired and kept in service? And I know buildings a lot older than that can be done. It may not be as fancy and all that. And Chris makes a point earlier that, well, you know, elevator broken, those things will happen again. Of course they happen again. All, all, um, buildings are nothing more than pieces of machinery. And they wear out, parts of them wear out. You gotta fix it, you gotta put a new staircase in, you have to put a roof in, you have an elevator in.
Jack, are you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but are you advocating for the repair plan that Ellen's advocating for? Or are you seeing something different?
I'm just throwing out, I'm not, I, I, what I'm saying is that I'm trying to put all the various things out there.
We have to be cautious though of two things. One, going in circles, which we are extremely at risk of doing if we're not doing it right now. And also providing so many options and entertaining so many options that decisions become impossible.
Analysis paralysis.
So my humble opinion, and I'll put this out there as a straw man, is that we either do some renovations at Highland Ave, which I expect will be expensive. And Ellen, I get the sense that what you're asking for is something to help range that. Because we've already heard what a comprehensive renovation would be, what would a minimum renovation be? Not just paint, not just replacing a few shingles, but a reasonably comprehensive renovation as one option, because people want to hear about that. And the other option being Pleasant Street. Either of those options, I would argue, requires getting out of Highland Ave for a couple of years.
Exactly.
I just want to make sure that when we think about communication plan, it's not, here's a hundred options. We want you to add another hundred options, because then we go back in circles.
Right.
And I think we've got two options.
Yep.
Getting to either of those two options requires getting out of Highland Ave for a couple of years.
That's the basic point.
That's the communication that I'm adding.
That's the community, I, I absolutely agree. And I've talked to people on that and I've told people whichever way we go, we have to get out of Highland Avenue. And the Pleasant Street is an interim solution. It could end, end up as a permanent, but at least it's an interim and it's ridiculously cheap. And so.
Okay.
Just one thing to add, again, others talk, that's, that's good. But we're throwing at Michelle, getting it back onto the, onto the merry-go-round again. So to a degree, I just think that this, Chris's comments were perfectly on, 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 on spot. As we come up with a plan, so if you come up with a plan, for instance, tearing down the annex, what do we have for restoration cost of the old building? Or we come up with a plan that was somewhere north of eighteen million, sixteen to eighteen to repair.
To renovate.
To renovate the existing annex and the town hall. So I mean, I would keep it down to a limited, because again, you put it right, we'll get thirty thousand new ideas that will come and it'll just bollocks up everything.
Wow, it's like you guys read the survey that I proposed a month ago on, you've got two options and these are them.
But if you come up with it, you know, what are we doing? What will make the building pretty? Let's tear down the annex, cap it over. But I think we ought to add in the ancillaries, like the windows, the sidings. All right, so people see a full package, I'm getting it. This is what you're gonna get out of a town hall. You're gonna get a community center, you're gonna get a dance hall, you're gonna get.
She's on it.
There. And then just a repair.
Have all the information.
So you have that up for Monday?
I have that for Monday, but I do have a question and I think it's something we're really gonna have to focus on, which is the phase move. To get a mover to move us, there's lead time. So we have to make sure that when we're making decisions, we're keeping in mind this phase move. Because to hire a mover off a state bid list, which is the best way to do it, we're looking at a six-week lead time to even get on their schedule. So I just want to be mindful, and we're talking about all this, that we're keeping in mind that, you know, whatever option we do discuss, that if, if the move is imminent, we need to start scheduling.
Oh, we did that.
I agree.
I thought we scheduled, I thought we were okay with that.
So let me, at risk of going in circles, let me test the waters. Who is comfortable with moving prior to town meeting?
Me.
Oh, you're raising your hand, Jack?
Yeah.
Yes, Chris Plex. Okay. Okay, well, that's majority.
Conservative. No, I did not.
I think, I think what we need to do is go to advisory and see if advisory will be willing to, if they're not willing to free up the funds, that it's over. And then we have to go to town meeting no matter what. Because we just don't have enough money. So I think that's the next practical step in effectuating the move before we go on that state list to get the movers. And I'm fine with moving ahead of time. My preference would be to probably have everything wrapped up in a bow for town meeting, but, you know, sometimes can't let perfect be the enemy of the good, I suppose. So, um, I think that advisory is the next key point though. We need to make sure that they're willing to do it. And they're meeting on tomorrow night.
Yeah, put this up front on tomorrow night, but I'll raise it with them, same, like, you know, this is.
Yep, okay, okay. I think their feedback's gonna be critical.
You're not gonna be looking at the stabilization fund policies.
Okay.
Wouldn't this count as a forty-eight hour? This is an upshot of a decision that was just discussed.
But I, I will definitely raise it with them, Jack, I don't know if they're prepared to vote or not.
Okay.
But yeah, no, no, I'm definitely gonna raise it.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I, I wanna start.
We didn't vote on anything tonight. We didn't vote on anything tonight, so nothing has changed.
Yeah. Yep. I think we should know the funds are there before we vote. I think that's important. Okay, so next steps are, Chris, you are gonna raise it with advisory, it being, will they devote advisory? Reserve funds, Michelle, you're gonna get a price on roof windows and sightings for Monday. You are going to continue working with Nick Bararty et al. on vetting the sixteen point eight number in terms of the sort of role level renovation, like what could that look like if we were to put a number on the warrant?
So we're looking repair plus cosmetic.
Repair plus cosmetic, exactly. Um, we, and we won't know by Monday, but the planning board is meeting on One Pleasant on the sixth. Okay, okay. We'll do that the next go. All right, is there any to do that I've missed that the board cares, the communication plan? Depending on the sickness.
Let me see, let me see, we get some, some dates for a forum in March.
Yeah, I think we need to start locking down dates. I think that's at least important. We probably want to also pull the list of those who attended the town meeting in November and consider sending them postcards in advance of a forum and a survey. So maybe we're looking at the forum at the middle to end of March to give people time and to give us time to get a survey up and go. And so that you can put a QR code on the postcard. So we'll, or we could send it to all residents, but certainly the ones that came to town meeting who are engaged. On a related note, if we do a QR code with a survey, we probably want to have um, a website landing page with background information and context like we've been talking about. Because the survey is in a great way sometimes of delivering info.
Freshen, okay. Do something.
Yeah. About that.
You're gonna try to create one-pagers again.
People like the one-pagers and they like the, they really like the videos.
I don't have quite, I don't, I'll have to test out our new guy's video skills. I don't think he's a drone, you know, somebody.
All right, is there anything else? Nope, okay. All right, let's move on to the next issues, which are one thirty-five King Street stabilization funds and rec projects. So I put this on the agenda because I thought it would be good to start giving residents consistent updates now that we have a new communication specialist on the status of these projects. Michelle, I feel like you're, you're nodding and. Please, go for it.
So all separate recreation projects. Um, we have our kickoff tomorrow with Activitas, a formal kickoff. In that is going to be myself, Ted Carroll, the Recreation Director, and Tim Bernika, the Chair of Recreation. There was a survey done this week at the sites. The geotechnical work is three weeks out and we're gonna start with that. I did meet with Sarah Crosson from the Beechwood Community about the playground. We talked about all kinds of options and what the playground should look like. We talked about fun ways to incorporate design and get the kids involved, put some message boards and things like that to make them excited about the project. She's actually meeting on site tomorrow after the playground designer. So she can get some additional information from the, the booklets that we have. She has children that are the ages of the playground structure. So it's, it's, um, it's actually great for them to be helping out with this. Um, so that's an update on the recreation.
So can I stop you right there? On the rec projects, this would be great to have in like a consistent landing page that residents could go to. If they're in the Beechwood area, let's say they're a new resident, they don't know Sarah, they're not a part of the group, but they're interested and they've got kids in that age range. I think that would be great to like broadcast, like here's where we are. If you want to go and meet with the designer, like this is the update for the next two weeks. This is what's going on. Just to get people like engaged and excited about it. That's what I'm thinking with these updates, because I think people want to see progress and also have a sense of how their money is being used.
Sure. And as far as Beechwood Playground, we did discuss when we would close the playground to begin the project, because the equipment is nine weeks out. Um, a closure of the playground would likely happen the beginning of July, which is actually great. It's the hotter months, they typically have the beach on the playground, so it just works out. And then the fall months, when it cools off, the kids can utilize the playground. We'll have a ribbon cutting and we'll be bringing a playground.
Yes, will the ball field be off limits during the construction in July?
Nope, so the ball field will be used. What will be off limits is the basketball courts, because what we're going to do is do the basketball courts at the same time to hopefully save some additional funding for mobilization. There is one, one item we have to address, which is the lacrosse wall. The youth lacrosse league did get a donation for the lacrosse wall from USA Lacrosse. I think we were gonna filter through the recreation budget because they're taking in donations there for Beechwood and for lacrosse. So just want to update you on that, that they are working on fundraising on their own and reaching out to all different outlets.
How much was the?
It was two thou, they allocate two thousand dollars.
Oh, two thousand?
Yep.
What did we have to find, a hundred?
Um, seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
So as far as tennis courts, as soon as that geotechnical is done, then we'll come up with a bigger plan. So I'll be able to update you even Monday on how our kickoff meeting went tomorrow. And we'll be able to refresh that weekly. One thirty-five King Street, I think everyone knows, we anticipate a closing April first. There's some things we're working out now with the lease tenants to make sure that we're assuming a property with terminations in place. Therefore, we're not responsible for relocation costs. We've vetted that with legal counsel. And then at the time in which we own the property, then we can start the process of really moving forward with the project.
I got something to add to that. Is there a way of getting both the chiefs involved in the day-to-day so they can relay that to their people? We talked about federal there, but, you know, be it a committee or something, just so that they're not, you know, and the town as a whole too. You know, all right, we bought this building, what are we doing that no one seems to know? So if they don't know, then no one else knows. So is there a way like getting a communication platform, something just to work with them, both chiefs? And so they can relate to their forces, so they get a day-to-day operations to what's happening, what's happening with them. That'd be, that'd be a plus.
Um, select work informal working group, and that's why I had working group listed. I'm not, um, we could, we could start with just the chiefs and Michelle under Chris and have you guys be the sort of informal meet when you want, report back on a consistent cadence. Or we, you know, I think once we get up with more progress, we can also broaden the working group, including with some, you know, some folks throughout the house that are construction professionals that may be helpful.
And she's at conversations with people that are interested in helping out, that he's worked with them in the past and are willing to lend a hand.
I mean, do you think the time is right for that more formal, bigger group right now or?
At least the chiefs to start.
The chiefs to start, I think, let's, let's take ownership of the building first. And then we can work on the rest.
And I'm sorry, what was the, the working group? I understand the chiefs and Michelle as communicating, but what would the working group be doing? Not making the decisions.
Be like a building committee just to assist with, you know, we have to select, we're gonna have to select a project manager through a public human process, kind of just like design professionals. To have people on the committee other than ourselves helping with that, who have outside expertise. And then they could be part of a building committee that would just help with the overall project, both engagement with the public, but also to ask questions that, you know, we may not have answers to, even the chiefs. Does not do quite as well as to handle the committee, because I think the structures for this are a little more embalmed.
Well, yes, and, and, and so I'm, I'm gonna say something that's probably not gonna resonate well with people. But I think because of the nature of a public safety building and the nuances of it, it's not like a new school, it's not like a new town hall. It, it's very particular and precise. And I, I, I think, to me, it's the opinion, opinions of the chiefs and the project manager and the subject matter experts when we get to the design and engineering phases that, that are important. Uh, I don't care if a door is here or there. I don't care if the walls are beige, do you know what I'm saying? It, it's. I don't care if there's crown molding, do you know what I'm saying? And I, I just think this particular building is very specific and the needs are very specific. And, um. I, 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 I don't, I, I don't know, I think, I think a working group, just you get more opinions. And then you can't meet because people can't schedule, because you can't get together and the smaller the group with the input on it. To me, for this particular project is the, is the better way to go.
I would agree with that a hundred and ten percent.
Agreed.
Only I'd add one caveat, the two buildings, not the one. Elm and.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
That's the only I'd add to Elm, cause I think she's spot on, so.
And, um, and I think Chief Puglies is gonna focus more on one thirty-five King Street, cause that's gonna be his entire station, whereas Chief Doggory will focus on Elm Street. Because that's gonna be his main station, so, um, but there'll be great synergies there, and like I said, they have, um, constituents that they're gonna work with. That have built buildings somewhere else in the past, so I think working with them initially would be great.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Michelle. I agree on all the design aspects, but you know, the, the chiefs are chiefs, they're not like. Construction engineers, and so it may be helpful to have some of our talented residents who, you know, do this for a living. And have been volunteering a lot of time for the town in other capacities to lend their expertise on like. You know, testing whether what we're being told by a third party that has a lot of our money, um, at. You know, in their hands, wh- whether what they're saying makes sense, you know, to kick the tires on some of the more engineering and technical aspects. But I think we're very far from that. I don't think we're there right now, um. Because I think that's more of what I was thinking about, more like the technical aspects in terms of the actual building, making sure like. We're not being quoted ridiculous crazy things, um, which is actually why I put down, not to quickly jump to the next agenda item, but. A project manager, like. A, a lot of these projects are gonna take a huge amount of time to constantly be managing, right? And so the question that I had for Chris and Michelle and have for the board that we can think about and address next week. Cause we're not talking about the budget is, do we need to build in? More room for personnel on this front when we have all of these projects swirling about, including a potential town hall project too. It, it, I mean, it's gonna be a lot, right? You're gonna be overseeing millions and millions of dollars of all sorts of projects.
Wouldn't a project like this automatically have a vertical work?
There would, there would be an owner's project manager on the project, however, there needs to be someone to oversee that person to make sure that, you know. They're staying on schedule and they're tracking the project appropriately, and, and more importantly, they're tracking the funding, right? Um, cause we stated that we were gonna spend this amount of money and we wanna make sure. I think that's a bigger piece of it. Um.
That's what I'm thinking.
And there's a, it's a, there's a lot, it's a lot.
Yeah, I know, it's a very crucial, you know, the owner's. The owner's rep of that vertical work, whatever. Put it in there, that's very important. I think the, uh, chair of the select board should.
Me? Uh, I'm not, no, I'll be long gone.
We had a staff member who's now in another community, he's done a lot of work on the water plants and saves a lot of money. By being engaged in some small, some, uh, smaller projects and helping manage some consultants. Something like that, I think would be helpful for, for this period of time.
Like to hire like some feral auditor, that's sort of what I have in mind, like someone who will really like keep on track of the money because. I will say, one of my close friends, um, used to be the chief of false claims for the Massachusetts attorney general and. Always sort of commiserated on how towns always got taken for a ride throughout Massachusetts on just inflated costs of everything. And I certainly don't want that to happen here. Um, not that I'm suggesting our contract as well, but you know what I mean, like we wanna be super on top of it. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up for people to think about, because I think if we do wanna. Build that, that's something we should think about from a budgetary standpoint in terms of that FTE.
And, and it sounds like, at least from anecdotal experience, it might pay for itself.
It might.
So we would need two, one for one thirty-five King Street, one for the recreation projects. I think we need one for stabilization web.
Sorry, I was gonna say, usually one, one project.
One, one for both.
For work alongside Brian Joyce, because he's still gonna have his hands in all of this as the town engineer, so I think one, one is good.
Okay.
We can see how that plays out, so, um, okay, so just to round off this agenda item and keep moving, cause I know it's nine thirty-seven, um. Again, appreciating that on the communication side where this is probably less pressing than town hall, but. Trying to get like a consistent template, I would imagine that you guys won't be the squirmers, Kevin would be, he would be helping you try to. You know, get like a one or two page or constant update going that we can consist, consistently put out. To people about like, here's where all the projects are and, um, you know, try to get ahead of questions of what are you doing, where are we, all of that.
Um, couldn't we just put them in the town manager weekly update?
I think we'd do that, but I think we'd, it, it would, it would also probably link to a bigger, like if there's a bigger report, right? You know, get the latest update, click here, so like put on social media, cause I think when some of these projects ramp up. There'll be multiple things going on, you know, tennis court, the playground, you know.
Absolutely, we could put it in there, but.
I know, we, we use that as a, that, that will be, that's not going away.
I think the recreation projects people will be interested in, cause they're gonna wanna know when, when can we go here or there, um. I think police, one thirty-five King is maybe a little different, cause we're gonna have a year of.
Yeah.
What's apparently no progress. So, so weekly and, and reach outs and all of that might not be appropriate at that point, but.
Well, we've also, our projects move forward, you know, that this is happening at this time.
Yeah, that just might be a constant standing item like FY twenty-five, you know, we're doing, we're in the design blah, blah, blah phase. Like, so at least whenever you pick up, you know, the one pager, it's, you, you know, if it's the first time you're looking at it, you know, like, oh, okay.
Or, I mean, also, I think a lot of people have learned on some of these smaller but significant projects with the school stabilization fund, uh, it's showing people. Oh, this got done, or, you know, the tile, like the tile, for example, and stuff like that to see that the money's actually making projects happen. But again, we'll have to work on that as well. You'll hopefully be Kevin, so.
Okay, so unless we have other things we wanna talk about, I'd suggest move on to the draft warrant first look at this point. So we're jumping past the budget presentation, we'll come back to that next week. Um. Is there something you wanna highlight, Chris?
Um, so if you just, you know, skip all the way down, everything up through article, um, twelve or. Well, thirteen or actually. Historical things we do, I mean, we have to fill in the, the, the details, right? These are all things that are on every annual. Um. The, uh, the library started a passcode program, I don't know if anybody knows that, they're very serious. They like to contain, they like to retain the revenue, because they make, they make a little money on that, so they can put it back in the library programs. I have no objection, and I, I don't know if we need to roll into another fund or create another one, uh, just for them. Uh, it's become quite successful, actually, so.
Are they gonna use it for their amphitheater?
I, I think they're seeing it, they can use it for that, I think it's for programming, um, so I don't think that may be enough. I, I did talk to Mayan today and it's become quite successful. Um, we're actually at the, um, so that's that, um, cellular carrier, we're, we're actually there finally, we, we have proposals for that, uh. That, uh, Wheelwright Park Tower, that's gonna light up that whole park for, for safety reasons.
So Chris, can you stop there and just, cause I know this is of intense interest to a certain portion of Cohasset. We're putting up the cell tower in Wheelwright to bring better cell service. It's where the existing radio tower is, so.
Well, it's in the same area, it's on the exact same location.
Okay, but where, where there is a radio tower, so there's not gonna be like a discernible, like visual difference of any sort, right?
It's in the back of the woods.
And we've been trying to do this for years, we required a home rule petition, right, to get it done, and it appears that the legislature is going to.
It's taking a long time, they gotta finally sign off on that, and in parallel, there's been work on specking in, and, and a proposal, an RFP or bid, one, an RFP.
We had an RPO.
And you're reviewing that?
We're reviewing it, we received three, um, viable responses. Um, we also just subsequently received two additional ones because they missed the deadline, but so we can't even consider those. Um, but there's tremendous amount of interest, um, it's lucrative, it's great, um, and we'll be awarding. Probably within the next two weeks.
And then we'll have to have ten minute approval, uh, at least of, of the site, so it'll not only, it'll not only generate revenue, but it'll, again, it'll greatly enhance. Cell service, which is very problematic.
Didn't we already get town meeting approval?
We did for the, for the, um, land swap, cause we had to, we had.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
This is, we gotta do at least more than a year, two, five years, or three years, I'm sorry, I forget my, my numbers. You have to get, um, um, formal approvals, we want, and this, these are usually for ten or twenty years. Um, there's an extension, uh, so that's that, and again, a very, this is an exciting project and it's something that's been long awaited, so, um. And, and I, I, I know there's people who've expressed concern to me about it, uh, but this is really a public safety issue, genuinely is. We're not tearing down a big chunk of the white barn, it's gonna be in the woods, it's gonna be there, but it's not gonna be a. Hopefully particularly intrusive, um. The property tax deferral for seniors, that's an extension, that's an expansion of existing programs that the Board of Assessors wants to do, I, I. I think the information's in there, but it, it's, it's gonna, it will allow more seniors to take part, it's raising some of the, the numbers. Pursuant to new state law to raise the, the thresholds, so you can have a little more money, you're not super, super poor, you can just be.
Like an inflation adjustment.
Uh, exactly. The MBTA communities overlay district, that'll be ready for conversation, and everybody saw, but the attorney general actually sued Milton today. Um, uh, so they are taking it quite seriously, um. See, you've already had a presentation, so you know where this is going. Proposal, uh, zoning bylaws, we're still waiting on what that will look like, but we just have a holder, it's probably, I think it's gonna be more than one article, but it's just there. Um, one thing that we learned, um, during a whole separate project is the town has no particular rules on construction hours. You think we would, we'd sell it. So, uh, Inspector Hallen has actually looked at it from other communities, are gonna propose a restriction based on some of our neighbors, so. Right now, you can, you can literally study back at four AM if you wanted to, and we don't have any rules against that, most people don't. But it's not unprecedented, the people will start warming up engines at five thirty in the morning, and it's not typically.
I say this in half jest, can we have leaf floors in there somehow?
You could most certainly do that, that would be noise more than construction.
Yeah, no, I know.
At least in construction, it's usually in the permit. It often is, but there's also people who do stuff on their own or maybe a lower, smaller scale, and it's not in the permit. And we have, we have no general bylaw that regulates it, yeah. So the, the planning would can, or the zoning would can restrict hours, but only if you get a permit. The, uh, the last is the plastic water bottle ban, uh, meeting with council is tomorrow, I think, I think, or, I think it's tomorrow. Or Thursday, um, and we're also gonna have a public meeting, uh, for council, anyone has any other citizen petition ideas, we'll leave it council. I think we're setting that up, I don't remember the exact date, but we're gonna be setting that up soon, so, um, that's what the warrant looks like today, um. And we're obviously gonna be filling all the things on top. So, by the way, in terms of citizens and employees, if anyone knows of anyone who's, you know, retired or someone who's might have passed away, it was a long time ago, we've never known. Please pass that along to my office, we compile a list of folks who, you know, may have retired or again, maybe have passed away for long, for long.
Ed Melty just passed away. He was president of the Pilgrim Bank for decades and decades and.
That's the one, um, as.
So can I ask a question on the citizens petition? So, a, a group of citizens put forth a petition, ten, ten signatures for town meeting. And we have to pay an attorney to vet their petition, or do they?
So it's been the policy of the town, it's been lunch, it's been a moderator's longstanding position, and it's become the board's position. To make it, uh, to help vet them so that, you know, we don't have a train wreck on ten minute floor, people may vote against them, but you don't wanna have it. Battle over procedural issues, oh, that's not, that's not a proper meeting for ten, that, that proper shit town meeting. Um, so we've kind of adopted kind of the Wayland model, which where they, they, we have council, and while people have questions about. With whether this is even appropriate for tapping, they can ask them, are we gonna have council look at the, the proposed ordinance to make sure it's actually compliant with the law? Not that we're gonna draft it for them, if that's not the goal of it, it was to help kind of make the process more smooth.
Thank you.
It's been something we've been doing for a while, so. So that's, that's where we stand.
Okey dokey, that sounds good, um, I'm gonna keep moving on the agenda items unless anyone wants to, no, okay.
Two quick updates, uh, for me, Mary Quills retired, Mary Quill, our, our longtime assessor is retired.
She should be recognized.
There's a party for her this week.
Yeah.
If anyone is interested, it's Thursday, uh, contact the assessors office, you can ask us after the meeting, um, so that's coming up this week. Um. And also on the service, I'm gonna give a quick update, um, I have been in contact with multiple state offices. And it seems, and I've also reached out to people at the underlying owner, True, True America. And, um, they don't seem to be particularly responsive to anybody. So I may be coming back to all of you in the next week or two with something more. Public, um, as an option, so I'm having conversations with our other partners in this, um, and, and. It, it's been frustrating, I mean, the state is mentioned, and, and they just won't talk to them, it's, it's, and, and this company advertised itself as a major national. Happy place, right? They True Americas, you know, how, you know, they have a nice website and they're, you know, it's nice quality properties and we treat people well, respect. And unfortunately, uh, without going any specific details, that, that has not been, we're starting to getting from some people. Um, and, um, we have staff working on some individual cases, so as, as that all crystallizes, I expect. Fairly shortly to come to you with a, if, if, with a direction, uh, that may be more public than I initially thought it might be.
So Chris, um. It was requested of you that you provide the documentation as to the legal justification for this about a month ago. When, when might you provide them?
I'm sorry?
Requested of you a month ago to provide the legal justification.
I circulated to all of you the, um, the caveat, the, the covenants and all, uh, that, 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 uh. Fairly certain, Jack, I, I sent it to you.
I never got it.
I, I would have, I will, I, 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 I thought I did, and I, and I, and if it didn't go through, I apologize, but I, I, I thought I had done it. Um, I, we have a copy of the approvals from the planning board, the select board, and the requirements that the, um, owner have to meet in terms of. In terms of, uh, access to records, um, it doesn't give the town veto power or anything, but as the town has oversight of certain. Records and responsibilities.
The regulatory and use agreement?
Yes, I.
Yeah, you sent it to us January sixteenth.
I, I didn't get it. Okay, all right, I'll have it, I'll, I'll make sure we resend it to you, or if, if you're getting forwarded to the mail, I appreciate it, so. When the ownership changed from Avalon to True America, they really never reached out in any particular way, they may have sent something, but, um. And, and it's not like they're not, even they are following, the, the state says they're, you know, they have a third party who does the, um. The vetting of the affordable affordability issue, so that they're doing all of the technical things they're supposed to do. The challenge has been that, and again, and again, there's no allegation that doing anything illegally, but. It's just some very steep rent increases for people in very vulnerable situations. Um, that while they may be completely within their rights, are, are not being, it's not being well handled on an individual basis and, and, and I.
They have some PR problem.
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
I'm, 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 I'm. Wondering whether to what extent the town government has the authority to e- essentially regulate rents. And go after private property owners, what happens if somebody owns a two family over in Beechwood, wanted to up the rents and we didn't think we liked it?
Well, it's not so much, it's not so much rent control, Jack, it's so much, if we have a vulnerable, the affordable housing, uh, component helps people who are. More economically challenged and, um, we have a support network here, uh, you know, with elder affairs, all that, so.
I would be in favor, that's why we have a support net, network. What, what, what members of our support network have reached out to these tenants, I understand one man is a.
Our veteran service officer is engaged on a particular case, our, our social worker is engaged in cases, our elder affairs team has been engaged. Our health director's been engaged.
And so are they providing housing?
Well, we don't provide housing, so the goal is to help people in the housing they're in, uh, and to see if there's ways that the owner, again, we're not talking about. Uh, more than a few people, but they're very significant situations, so we'd rather not see. An aged veteran become homeless or someone else become homeless if there's a way to assist, so. The problem is that there hasn't, and again, you know, as, as a landlord, one is not obligated to be. Um, you know, a big hearted, at the same time, the goal here is to quietly.
That's not, that, that's not. The issue, you're, you're intervening, and I'm very sympathetic, I was, been, I was in that business. And I provided out of my. I was then, I was in that business and I provided out of my own pocket many, many times a significant. Rent forgiveness. I'm not arguing that position. I'm just arguing that of all the needs that are of, of many people. And I might reach out to the company as, as well. Um, but I've been waiting to find out if in fact, and if in fact. In that agreement, there was some kind of ongoing responsibility. We should find it. And if not, if we decide that it, it's, it's worthy, there are. Things that you can do and it might be if the town thinks it's an issue, the town can appropriate money. Public funds, we have lots of public funds which are meant to help people in need. So this is where I would say, and quite honestly, it was, you know, a little. Um, I don't know why I didn't get this. Um, right? Or I, I know I looked at something, but I didn't see anything which granted the town. Or any regulatory authority, any ability to go in and do anything other than make sure that the. All the rents were within the guidelines that were in the original agreement.
So, Jack, let me intervene here. Chris is doing this at the direction of the select board when we discuss this. Um, in terms of reaching out to the developer who has not in fact. Reached back out to us and the developer is represented by council. And so I think we need to go through. Our appointed representative because the developers' council has been, um. Very clear about that in terms of reaching out to their client directly, uh, just as a heads up. Um. But what we would expect from those who get relief from our zoning laws and enter into agreements with the town. Where they are required to, for example, consulting good faith about concerns. And resolve objections within a certain time period, both with the state and the town. That they would at least return a phone call or a letter. And if we have to serve them through their registered agent, then we can do that. It would be my hope we don't have to do that or make a referral to the attorney general.
And that's to my point. If there are things in there that they're required to do, they are required to do.
I think the point is we're concerned they're not doing it. So this is, this is both, um, a concern about a breach of contract. But also their conduct and whether they are acting appropriately because there are laws. That go beyond just this contract in Massachusetts, as someone who has enforced these laws for many years for the Attorney General's office. That are concerning and we should be taking this seriously with respect to these residents. That go beyond just the rent increases, other surrounding conduct that we may want to look at. But typically what you do before you refer someone for prosecution. And consideration on that front is you try to reach out to them and see if you can resolve objections first, which is what we're trying to facilitate.
Specifically abstain and ask for information.
Yep.
Which I did not get because I'm well aware of that. And if they are in violation, that's a whole different deal. And I just, I don't know why I, I, I missed that, or maybe I went through there and I didn't see this, a smoking gun. I don't know, but.
Yeah, and I don't mean to be upset with you. I'm upset with the developer who isn't fulfilling what they're supposed to be doing. And including in a, on a, like a basic professional.
I would say you're stupid.
Oh, well, we can agree on that.
Because having been in the business, um, and in very challenging and a whole variety of things. I can assure you that, that if you're a landlord, don't be stupid. They're being stupid.
Yeah, so, yeah, agree. All right. Thank you for the update. I think, um. I think if the state can't find its way to accelerate on its end, I can provide it with some suggestions if you'd like. And we can go from there. I don't, I, I, it would be my hope that the state can work with the town. To start to make some forward progress on this issue because there's no reason they can't. They have tools if they know how to use them.
There's different, we're working with different.
And just to give people context as to why we're so focused on this. We have people that are, you know, eighty-year-old veterans that are sick and. About to be evicted because of these crazy rent increases as well as. Other fees that are being charged on top of this that are questionable. Um, and so we are trying to, you know, simply assist residents that have lived in Cohasset for many years. Some of them have dependents, uh, children. Um, and so, you know, we're, we're trying to help them navigate. We're not their lawyers. We can't be their lawyers, but we are trying to, you know, help our residents in whatever way we can. Um, within the confines of our authority, so. All right, Chris, anything else? Okay. No, not yet. No, um, approval of minutes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I want select board comments. Um, any comments?
Yes, nobody else? Okay, Saturday night, this coming Saturday night, class at, um, Athletic Hall of Fame will be having their induction ceremony. Um, it, we've been on hiatus since before COVID, so it's quite a large class. We have a hundred and eighty people coming. To the Cohasset Golf Club and I'll just fly through the inductees. John Buckley, football class of seventy-four, John Drago, golf class of eighty-four, Billy McKenna, soccer class of eighty-six. Casey Anderson Cameron, basketball class of oh-five, Robert Jones, basketball class of eleven. Dan Leahy, our favorite town photographer, is being honored and inducted as a special contributor. Um, and the nineteen ninety-four to ninety-six boys' basketball team and the two thousand eight to two thousand and ten girls' basketball team. So it's going to be quite an event. All right, any comments?
No.
Okay, okay. All right, um, approval of minutes, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? Anyone want to make a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye, aye. We have one. Chris abstains, um, because he wasn't present. Um, we have one topic that was not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours. Namely, we just got from the schools, a, um. Statement of intent, interest, interest. Sorry, I didn't know what the ayes stood for. To apply to the MSBA accelerated repair program for the Ausgood School roof. We discussed this earlier. This will enable us to potentially, um, seek funding for up to forty percent of the repair. Any discussion?
Is it capped at forty or is it based on?
Up to forty, I think. Uh, uh, that's an approximate.
Yeah.
I would make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All right. And it, would anyone like to, well, before we adjourn, just logistics. Is everyone okay with meeting Monday, March fourth? You okay with that, Jack? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I know that's a little off schedule. I just want to remind everyone. Okay.
I'm out of town, March twelfth, and maybe.
Okay.
March fourth will be at the school, going to be at the community room, the high school.
Okay.
This is going to be set up for the primary the next day.
Okay. Glad you mentioned that. Okay. Okay, so, um.
We should make sure that the door by the auditorium is open to get to the community. Oh, the community room by the superintendent. Okay, okay, yeah.
Wait, we, that, that we can't go into the learning commons, the speakers or something.
Okay. The community room, okay.
So we go in by the superintendent's office, on the side entrance.
By Alumni Field.
Where we had the form for roads and sidewalks in schools.
Yeah.
All right, adjournment. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is adjourned.